Good morning and welcome to the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchise. At this time, we ask if you can place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We're ready to begin.
Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you, Sergeant. Good morning and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee of Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. Happy New Years, everyone. This is the first meeting this year. Glad that everyone's here. Before I begin, I would like to wish my fraternity, Capo of the South Fraternity, a happy 112-year anniversary today. So I just want to wish my fraternity that. Now, to begin this morning, I am joined by Councilmembers Lynn Schollman, Councilmember Carr, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember Abreu, and Chair Lewis. Today, we will hold public hearings for three rezoning proposals in Queens, one rezoning proposal in Brooklyn, and for an Empire State Development Corporation grant to be awarded also in Brooklyn. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my mic. Technical issue, sorry, guys. Thank you, Chair Riley, and Happy New Year. I am Angelina Martinez Rubio, Council to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify might testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in this room, 14th floor, please see one of the sergeants at arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify before the Subcommittee, if you are joining us remotely, you will remain muted until recognized by the Chair or I to speak. When the Chair or I recognizes you, your microphone will be unmuted. So please make sure that your device is on and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit today public testimony to two minutes for witness. But if you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, or if you would like to submit testimony instead of appearing here before the Subcommittee today, you may email it to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. We request that witnesses joining us remotely to remain in the meeting until excused by the Chair or I, as Councilmembers may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's addenda items.
Thank you, Council. I will now open the public hearing on LU's number 155 relating to the 97-27-57th Avenue Commercial Overlay Proposal in Councilmember Moya's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to map a C2-4 overlay within the existing 46A/C1-2 and R6B zoning district. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant at arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Council, can we please call the first panel for this item?
Can we just have the panel for 57th Avenue come up to a front? So the panel will be Allison Carreri, Patrick Taylor, and David West.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Panelists, can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant panel team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Riley, Councilmembers. My name is Allison Carreri of Greenberg Traric LLP, Land Use Council for the applicant. We have with us here today Patrick Taylor from Shorewood Real Estate Group representing the applicant and David West from Hill West Architects. I'll give the initial presentation, and then our entire team will be available to take questions. This is an application to facilitate the expansion and modernization of the existing Food Bazaar supermarket at 97-27-57th Avenue, Queens Block, 1906 Lot 1, by mapping a C2 commercial overlay over the entire property while leaving the existing underlying residential zoning districts in place. Next slide, please. Here, you can see the site's location and context. It occupies the 57th Avenue block front between 97th Place and 98th Street, just north of Lefrak City and near a number of shopping centers. Next slide, please. The property is owned by Bogapah, the operator of the Food Bazaar chain of supermarkets across the tri-state area. The supermarket has been in the neighborhood for nearly 60 years, and the owner would like to rebuild it with a larger, more modern supermarket so that it can continue to serve the neighborhood going forward. Bogapah have brought in Shorewood Real Estate Group as a partner in the proposed redevelopment in the site. The supermarket was built in 1962 pursuant to a BSA variance that had a 25-year term. The variance was needed because the site was in an R6 district in which no commercial uses are permitted. Because of the term limit for the variance, it has had to be extended numerous times and is currently set to expire in less than five years. Next slide. Since the variance was granted, a commercial overlay was mapped on the portion of the site within 100 feet of 57th Avenue. This is only about 20,000 square feet of the site's approximately 34,000 square feet of lot area. So the variance is still necessary for the approximately 80-foot-deep portion of the supermarket that is located in the residential district beyond the overlay. So this application proposes to establish a new C2-4 commercial overlay over the entire property within 185 feet of the north side of 57th Avenue on the west half of the block and within 160 feet of 57th Avenue on the east half of the block. The existing R6A and R6B zoning districts underlying the commercial overlay would not change. This would, and the extension of the commercial overlay would enable a new, larger supermarket to be built without obtaining an amendment to the BSA variance. The proposed commercial overlay would not impact the maximum permitted floor area on the site of approximately 88,400 square feet. Since the property is now built to well below such maximum floor area, the owner determined that a new development should, new development with an expanded supermarket should also utilize the property's permitted floor area by providing residential units above the new supermarket. The residential component and proposed building envelope is entirely as-of-right under today's zoning, and the proposed zoning change to establish the new commercial overlay would just allow the owner to have a larger store. Next slide. The existing store is built almost 60 years ago and has old and inefficient fixtures and mechanical systems. The store has undergone very minimal updates since it was built, and given the uncertainty of the limited term of the variance, this is a challenge for ownership to invest in upgrades. Next slide. The store's existing floor plate is about 22,000 square feet, about a quarter of which is back-of-house and storage space, all on the ground floor. The supermarket has an open parking area along the 98th Street side of the site with 21 parking spaces and an open loading area. The trash is also located within the unenclosed loading dock area. Currently, customer vehicles enter the surface parking lot on 57th Avenue, immediately adjacent to an existing bus stop, and exit on 98th Street using the same curb cut that delivery trucks utilize to access the loading dock. And we heard from discussions with the community board that there are existing safety issues, and we agree with the location of the supermarket entrance on 57th Avenue, immediately adjacent to that bus stop. Next slide, please. In our proposed ground floor layout, the main supermarket customer entrances would be located on 57th Avenue with the residential entrance located around the corner on 98th Street. Loading and trash would be enclosed and would be located on 98th Street. We think the enclosed condition of the loading and trash would greatly improve odor and vermin conditions. The entrance and exit to the supermarket parking, which would be located in the cellar, would be moved to 97th Place. We think moving the parking entrance off of 57th Avenue and away from the bus stop will be safer for pedestrians and will ease congestion at the busy corner of 57th Avenue and 98th Street, and that separating the supermarket parting from both the loading and the trash area will improve the customer experience and prevent delivery truck interference with customers' vehicle circulation. Lastly, a residential parking garage would also be provided, and it would be on the second floor of the building with its entrance and exit on 98th Street in the current location of the supermarket parking entrance. Because of the reduced traffic patterns of residential vehicles as compared to supermarket vehicle trips, we think this would reduce trips on the 98th Street side of the site. Next slide. Based on feedback that we received from the community board, we made changes to the plans to increase the number of supermarket accessory parking spaces as compared to our filed application. While our filed application showed 25 supermarket parking spaces, we now propose to excavate the entire cellar level and increase the number of supermarket parking spaces to 46. The supermarket garage would be self-park and free to supermarket customers. Next slide. The store has undergone very minimal updates since it was built, and the proposed action would allow Food Bazaar to have an expanded and modernized store. The illustrative images on the screen are from a recently constructed Food Bazaar at Bronx Terminal Market. In keeping with these newer Food Bazaar stores, the market would have an expanded product selection, particularly for fresh produce, meat, and seafood, much more energy-efficient fixtures, and improved waste management systems. Next slide. As shown on this chart comparing the current store to the proposed store, the new store would have a larger floor plate on the ground floor, allowing for an increase in the size of the sales floor by about 5,000 square feet, which is about a 30% increase over the current sales floor, and would also add about 8,000 square feet of new back-of-house space in the cellar, nearly doubling the total amount of existing storage area. As I noted, the applicant proposes to provide 46 parking spaces, and so while the size of the selling space in the supermarket is increasing by approximately 30%, the number of supermarket parking spaces will be more than doubled, which we think will greatly improve the customer's ability to find parking for this store. Next slide. The development would utilize the site's maximum permitted floor area of about 88,400 square feet, about 26,400 of which would be the commercial floor area, not including the cellar, and the rest of which would be residential above with 78 dwelling units. In addition to the supermarket parking in the cellar with having 46 spaces, the building would also have 45 residential accessory parking spaces on the second floor of the building, which is equal to almost 60% of the units, exceeding the minimum required by zoning. Next slide. To provide additional context for this application, the architect has prepared illustrative massing for the as-of-right building that would be developed. These images show the existing, the proposed massing for the building in context with Lefrak City to the south and the lower-density residential buildings to the north. The proposed massing would comply with all floor area and bulk requirements within the existing R6A and R6B zoning districts, which again wouldn't be changed by the proposed rezoning, including the maximum height limitation of 75 feet for the six-story portion in the R6A district and a maximum of 55 feet in the R6B district. Next slide. As you can see from this angle, in keeping with the existing zoning that has a higher density along 57th Avenue and a lower density in the rear, the building would step down, going from 57th Avenue towards the lower-scale buildings to its north. Next slide. In our discussions with Councilmember Moya, he has stressed the need for community space in this area. The applicant controls the site immediately adjacent to the supermarket on 97th Place, shown here in red, and is committed to constructing a new two-story community center thereon. Next slide. We've prepared some illustrative images of the community center here, and the next slide shows another potential illustrative image. Next slide, thanks. This would be an ADA-compliant two-story building containing about 2,700 gross square feet with a private backyard, as shown on the plans. Next slide will show the layout of the building and the rear yard. The space would be rented at a reduced rate. While a tenant has not yet been determined for the space, Councilmember Moya has raised the possibility that this may be a good location for the relocated Queens Public Library Lefrak City branch to reopen, and we are looking forward to further discussions to determine if this space would accommodate their program needs. Thank you for your attention, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Allison. I just have a few questions for the applicant team regarding this application before I toss it over to Councilmember Moya. How long would the existing supermarket likely be closed during construction of the proposed project? And how far is the next supermarket from this location?
Hello, is it on?
Yeah. Thank you. My name is Patrick Taylor. I'm with Shorewood Real Estate Group, the applicant. The downtime for the construction period for the supermarket will be about 24 to 30 months. That's not gonna, you know, and that would happen after the pre-development and design period is completed. So we wouldn't anticipate any, the store closure for at least two years from now. The nearest store is, the nearest Food Bazaar store is about five blocks away on Junction Boulevard in Lefrak City. There's another Food Bazaar there. It's less than, it's about a quarter of a mile away. Food Bazaar also has another location about a mile north on Junction Boulevard and 37th Avenue.
Thank you. Well, current supermarket employees have the opportunity to return to the new supermarket after construction of the proposed project is complete.
Sure. So all of Food Bazaar is, all the union, all Food Bazaar employees are governed by wall-to-wall union across all the Food Bazaar locations. So ahead of closure, you know, Food Bazaar has to give proper notice to all the employees as well as give them the opportunity to work at any of their locations that work for them nearby. So upon closure, staff will be relocated to the 30 other Food Bazaar stores in the city. And upon reopening, the previous employees will have the first opportunity to work at the new store.
Thank you. And lastly, can you describe any environmental sustainability features of the proposed development?
Yeah, hi, I'll take that. I'm David West from Hill West Architects. It's a little early for us to commit to very specific commitments, but we've been studying the site both from a sustainability perspective and a resiliency perspective. As far as sustainability is concerned, the building is likely to be all-electric or nearly all-electric. It would have a highly efficient building envelope. We're certainly considering green roofs and solar arrays on a site like this, and we would be putting in at least a minimum 20% of the parking spaces to have charging station capability. As far as resiliency is concerned, we understand there have been some flash precipitation events in the neighborhood. We don't believe they've affected this site specifically. So we do need to study that a little bit further, but there are a number of common sense measures that we will employ. Among them, the green roof, an oversized detention tank, elevating the RPZ valve to the ground floor rather than putting it in the cellar. And we've arranged the parking ramps so that the ramp that leads up to the second floor is at the low point of the site, so there's a natural protection there. And the ramp that leads down into the cellar would be at the high point of the site and could even be crowned a little bit at its, close to the street to keep water from getting in the cellar. We would also study our door locations and make sure they're all at the highest points they can be for the spaces they're located in. And to the maximum extent possible, locate our residential mechanical systems above grade. I do want to emphasize this is not a flood zone or any sort of a specific flood hazard area. These are just common sense measures that we're employing pretty much for any site these days. And as we get a little further into design these days, the buildings we are designing tend to be very sustainable, both because of things that you have done to create incentives and local laws that we appreciate and are incorporating into our buildings, and also because that's become a marketable aspect of this type of architecture.
Thank you so much. Just like to state for the record, we've been joined by Councilmember Moya online and Councilmember Wrestler. And I would now like to turn it over to Councilmember Moya to ask his questions. Councilmember Moya?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, but my video can't come on right now. But I just have very brief questions here. But one is, is the applicant willing to provide any affordable housing units in the proposed development with the understanding that there is no MIH text amendment in this proposal, and there is currently no 421A equivalent program in place? Is this a discussion that you're willing to have?
Hi, good morning, Councilmen. Yes, you know, as you know, when this project started, you know, 421A Affordable Housing Program was in place, and the intention was to proceed with affordability in this development pursuant to that program. As most of us know, that program has lapsed and not been reinstated. At this time, there is no appetite to proceed with a redevelopment here that includes a multifamily component without some level of affordability and some level of tax abatement. It's really not a feasible development as purely market rate. So yes, absolutely, that's something that we intend to include in a redevelopment here. When that will be, you know, is another question.
Thank you. And just can you go back to the number again of how much of the floor area could be for the community facility under the proposed zoning?
As designed, based on the size of the adjacent site, a two-story building could have, and the required rear yard, a two-story building, we think, would have about 2,700 gross square feet.
Got it, okay. And I know that we have talked in regards, and you mentioned this in your presentation, about the Queens Public Library. We just want to make sure that we can advance those conversations sooner rather than later.
Absolutely. I don't think there's any problem with that.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moya. We've also been joined by my colleague, Councilmember Eric Botcher. I'll now invite my colleagues to ask any questions. Do we have any Councilmembers with questions? There being no further questions, the applicant panel is excused. Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on the 97-27-57th Avenue proposal remotely or in person?
Chair, we don't have any witnesses signed up online, but if there's anyone here in person that wants to testify on this item, please come forward and fill out a speaker card with one of the sergeants. Looks like we have no one, so we can go ahead and close the hearing.
There being no members of the public who wish to testify on LU 155 relating to the 97-27-57th Avenue proposal, the public hearing is not closed, and the item is laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LU's numbers 160 and 161 relating to the Reform Temple of Forest Hills rezoning proposal in Councilmember Schollman's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an existing R1-2A zoning district to an R7D zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online. You may do that now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. I would now like to toss over to Councilmember Schollman to give remarks before the applicant panel comes up. Councilmember Schollman?
Thank you very much. I am proud to continue to support the development of affordable housing in my district, and I am especially pleased to see the development of new affordable homes and ensure the continuing presence and growth of such an important institution to the community as the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. Established in 1994, the Reform Temple of Forest Hills was formed through the coming together of four congregations. Since its founding, it has played an increasingly important role in the community and has been an asset to Forest Hills, Queens for nearly three decades. The proposed development will ensure that it will continue its important work in a more accessible and sustainable facility for years to come while providing much-needed affordable housing. I want to thank Chair Riley, committee staff, and the applicant team for their work and look forward to today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schollman. Council, please call the first panel for this item.
The first panel for this item, if we could just have the two speakers come up, will be Vivian Krieger, sorry if I was pronouncing your name Vivian, and Rabbi Mark Keizerman for the Reform Temple of Forest Hills.
Council, please administer the affirmation.
Applicants, can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answer to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landus testimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you, please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Vivian Krieger of Cozen O'Connor for the applicant. Thank you to Chair Riley, and thank you very much to Councilmember Schollman for that wonderful introduction. If we could get the presentation up. Well, you guys have the printout, so I'll just go ahead. The application before you is for the proposed rezoning of the Reform Temple of Forest Hills located at 711112th Street. Oh, great, thank you. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. The application before you is for the proposed rezoning of the Reform Temple of Forest Hills located at 711112th Street in Queens Community District 6. Both the community board and borough president recommended approving this project, and the City Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the project. I will walk you through a short presentation and then turn it over to Rabbi Mark Keizerman. The project architect is also here and available to answer any questions. Next slide, please. The application seeks to rezone the site to an R7D zoning district along with a corresponding text amendment to map the area for MIH. This would allow the proposed building, which would rise nine stories before setting back for the 10th floor and would step down along 71st Road, and would enable the temple to move into a new ADA-compliant space at the same location while providing residential units above. Next slide. This is a different view where we can see the green roofs at all levels as well as neighborhood context. Next. At an open house we held at the temple for the congregants and the neighbors, and at the community board, we received feedback about the importance of enlivening the ground floor experience to keep in context with the green spaces in the neighborhood. This rendering shows you not only the building with the temple entrance on 71st, but some of our preliminary ideas on how to green the ground floor. As you can see here, we're beginning to play around with the idea of including some setbacks and articulations at the ground floor, which we go to the next slide. We can see on the lower left-hand corner. The temple's new 16,600-square-foot facility will be a fully accessible ground-floor condominium owned by the Reform Temple with its own entrance on 71st Road and would include outdoor space at the ground floor level as well as on the second floor. The ground floor will- The ground floor will also have the residential entrance and parking entrance along 112th Street. The project would require 60 parking spaces. Initially, we contemplated including additional parking spaces, but in response to Councilmember Shulman and others, we would only provide the required number of parking spaces and use any additional space for additional bicycle parking. EV chargers will also be provided. Next slide, please. There will be nine floors of residential space, approximately 153 units. The project would utilize MIH option 1 and would require 38 units to be permanently affordable. In response to Councilmember Shulman and others, we are happy to say that we would be able to provide an additional five units of affordable housing at 60% AMI. The applicant is committed to a goal of hiring MWBE and local firms. Not only is the Reform Temple of Forest Hills, but the developer, Werber, is a family-owned Queens developer and property manager. Ben Werber is the next generation of leadership and takes MWBE and local hiring very seriously. Although we're very early in the stages of this project, Werber has worked with a number of MWBE and local firms on recent projects in Queens, including 7117 Roosevelt Avenue. Next slide, please. The apartment building will have amenity space for all of the residents, including outdoor spaces on the roof. This is an example from that project on Roosevelt Avenue. Next slide. The applicant was asked to provide greater consideration for site drainage by going beyond the DOB and DEP minimum requirements. The applicant will be providing additional measures. They'll be installing roof drains that will allow control of the flow of stormwater so as to not overflow the city's storm sewer system. In conjunction with the roof drains, they will be installing either rooftop retention or detention tanks to capture the stormwater. The green roof will be designed to retain stormwater through permeable materials and native plantings consisting of flood and drought tolerant species. They will be providing enlarged tree pits along the property frontages and will be maximizing planted areas on the site, which is all beneficial for stormwater uptake. And they are looking at permeable pavers for any open areas at grade on the site that cannot accommodate planting. And then within the building itself, they will be installing low-flow toilets. And I'll turn it over to Rabbi Mark Keizerman.
Good morning, Chair Riley and council members. My name is Mark Keizerman, I am the rabbi at the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The Reform Temple of Forest Hills has been part of the Forest Hills community for 28 years. I had been privileged to be the rabbi there for 10 years, following the founding rabbi, Mayor Perlmutter. In these decades, we have strived to be an active part of the neighborhood, supporting our nearly 300-member families and the community around us. Our current building was constructed in 1964 and was not built to last beyond six decades. At almost 60 years old, the building requires constant costly repair. In addition, the structure lacks modern technology that allows to teach our kids and lead our religious services more effectively. The building has staircases throughout, making it difficult for our many senior citizen members and others with mobility issues to access synagogue life. In short, our current building can no longer serve our congregation's needs, nor does allow us to fulfill our potential to be of service to the broader community. We explored different options to keep the synagogue thriving towards the future, but even the best renovation would leave us with a building that is not friendly to those with disabilities. We investigated moving to another site, but finding an alternate location in Forest Hills has proven unlikely, and most of our congregation is local. We are the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. Working with an excellent developer partner, Benjamin Werber, we want to transform this lot into the new home for the temple with an apartment building above. RTFH will own the first floor of the building in a new contemporary site. It will be ADA-friendly and will have a flexible design to enable us to explore offering more programs to the community. At our congregation's chorus, tikkun olam, helping to repair the world, RTFH has strived to be an active part of helping make our neighborhood, Queens, and beyond a better place. We have worked closely with Forest Hills churches and synagogues to create programs and events in the community, including the annual interfaith Thanksgiving service and the interfaith food drive. We have hosted the Thanksgiving service many times. We are humbled and honored to support our Queens community in holding the funerals for Queens District Attorney, the Honorable Richard A. Brown, and for Deputy Chief Police Officer, both of blessed memory in recent years. We hold P flag meetings, community concerts, along with a variety of neighborhood events, meetings, and programs. I want to especially thank Councilmember Lynn Shulman for her constant and continual support of this project and our congregation's families. Our temple's families are neighbors and friends. The plan is one we developed for the financial future of our congregation, allowing us to work in partnership with a local developer to sustain the congregation and to continue to be an essential part of Forest Hills. And we think it will be a beautiful new spiritual space for our members and for Queens. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, thank you, Vivian, thank you, Rabbi, for coming here today. Just a few questions before I toss it to Councilmember Shulman. Do you plan to target the Borough President's recommended goal of 30% MWBE for local hiring and contracting?
Absolutely. Local hiring and MWB hiring is incredibly important to this developer. They work in close consultation with a number of organizations, a number of Queens organizations, and they will continue to do so on this project.
Thank you.
They have no problem getting that.
Thank you. You went through a very descriptive environmental sustainability features that you will be adding to the project, so I won't go into that. I am interested in knowing, Rabbi, during the construction of this project, where would you be able to go with your congregation, be able to fellowship?
We're currently exploring options. Obviously, we have lots of needs with services and religious schools and other things. We're looking at a number of places in the immediate neighborhood of buildings that are open, of synagogues that don't fully use their site on set, and we hope to find a place, as this moves along, in the neighborhood where our families can attend services and lifecycle events ongoing.
Thank you, Rabbi, thank you, Vivian. Councilmember Shulman?
First, I want to say, Rabbi, my chief of staff, oh, he was here. We will also help you with that search, so we can talk offline about that.
Thank you.
Yes, and so what I want to ask you, I have just a couple of questions because you asked most of them in the presentation, but one is, for the additional apartments, what's the mix going to be, the unit mix?
It's going to be two studios, two one-bedrooms, and one two-bedroom.
Okay, and did you mention bike parking, or did I miss that? Is there going to be bike parking provided?
Yes, absolutely, and we'll go above what's required in the zoning.
Okay, Chair, that's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Shulman. Do we have any council members with questions for this applicant panel? There being no questions for this applicant panel, you are now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who is to testify on the Reform Temple of Forest Hill proposal?
Thank you.
In person or remotely?
If we have anyone in person, can you please come to the front or see one of the sergeants to fill out a speaker card? We have about five members of the public online, so give me just one second to make a quick announcement. So you'll have two minutes to speak. So the first, and we'll call you as a panel of five. So the first panel will be, and then we're going to call you in this order, hopefully you're all online, Andrew Kimler, Seth Diamond, Leor Evan, Steve Strauss, and Marcia Parnas, sorry if I'm mispronouncing your names. So the first speaker will be Andrew Kimler.
Starting time.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andrew, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Andrew Kimler, and I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak today. I am speaking in support of the application submitted by the Reform Temple of Forest Hills and Werber Management. After my family relocated to Forest Hills from upstate New York in 2013, we did not know a soul in the community until we found the Reform Temple. The temple quickly became our spiritual home and a connection to the community. It also created ways for us to serve our community through various temple committees. Our temple has also joined hands with other houses of worship to serve our community and to find ways to eliminate the barriers that sometimes divide us. The creation of a new home for our temple will allow us to exist and preserve our reform, spiritual, and community home. It will also become ADA accessible, thus enabling us to better serve seniors and the disabled while also creating needed housing, especially affordable housing. Thank you again for permitting me to testify this morning.
Thank you. Then this applicant will be Seth Diamond.
Starting time.
Good morning, Chair Riley and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to present testimony to you today. My name is Seth Diamond, and I'm a long-term resident of Forest Hills and the president of the Reform Temple of Forest Hills. I'm here today to strongly urge your support for the zoning proposal before you. The Reform Temple of Forest Hills is a vital community institution, and this zoning proposal is essential to our long-term financial viability. As the only reform temple in Queens, the Reform Temple provides critical spiritual support for hundreds of Queens residents. Without it, many families would be forced to look beyond the city boundaries and move to a new community to find a synagogue that was the right fit. The Reform Temple is much more than a religious institution. We provide important public policy, educational, and community-building programs in a wide range of areas. We host programs for the LGBTQ community. We have a vibrant senior-focused calendar featuring music programs and informative talks. We have hosted advocacy programs for the disability community. All our programs are free or at low cost and are open to all. We are also proud to have hosted Councilmember Shulman for community events and thank her for all her strong support of our congregation. With the redeveloped building that will result from this zoning proposal, we will be able to do even more for the community. Our space will have greater accessibility, allowing there to, more people to reach us. It will also be more flexible and can accommodate more uses. Our congregation also strongly supports the housing that will result from this proposal. As a congregation, we are deeply invested in the long-term health of our city, and that requires more housing, including more affordable housing. We look forward to the additional units this proposal would allow, and we welcome, we look forward to also welcoming our new neighbors to the community. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this important proposal.
Thank you. The next person on this panel will be Leor Evan. Leor, you may begin.
Starting time.
Leor, are you there?
Sorry, I was muted, sorry about that.
It's all right, go ahead.
Good morning. First, thank you to the council members and the zoning subcommittee for the opportunity to speak, and thank you to Councilmember Shulman for your ongoing support. My name is Leor Evan. I've been a resident of New York City for over 40 years and have lived in Forest Hills and been a member of the Reform Temple of Forest Hills for over 20 years. As Rabbi and others have noted, this project is very important to the Reform Temple. It will provide the congregation with a modern, fully ADA-accessible home, and it will also boost the temple's finances, enabling it to continue operating longer into the future. As important, I think, is the project will provide benefits to the neighborhood and more broadly. A fully accessible space will enable the temple to offer more programming for the general community, and in addition, as we all know, city faces a dire shortage of housing. I think I've read that we need more than 500,000 units over the next seven to 10 years. Without more housing and better affordability, the city cannot continue to thrive. This project provides much-needed market rate and affordable rental apartments in a beautiful new building that fits in with the neighborhood. And this neighborhood in particular is an excellent candidate for more housing, given how well-served it is by public transit. So I urge the subcommittee to recommend approval of the project, and I thank you again for your time.
Thank you. The next applicant to speak is, soon, the next witness to speak is Stephen Strauss. Stephen, you may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley, and members of the Land Use and Zoning Committee. I'm here today to speak in favor of the rezoning. I am a member of the Reform Temple of Forest Hills and also a Forest Hills resident. This is a great project that helps the finances of the temple, but more importantly, it provides critically needed housing at all different price points in a neighborhood that's well-suited to accept and accommodate additional housing like this. As you saw from the artist's rendering, the building fits in with other apartment buildings in our neighborhood. There'll be an even taller building behind it, a block or so, when the Parkland Hospital site is redeveloped. And as Mr. Door pointed out, we are a very transit-rich neighborhood in Forest Hills. The location is about three blocks from an express subway station. It's about five blocks from the Long Island Railroad Station in Forest Hills, and we have excellent bus service from the Q60, the Q23, and the Q64, all within a couple of blocks of this site. It's been well documented that New York City is critically short of housing. This is a great location to start adding to our housing stock, and several independent planning organizations have recommended this portion of Forest Hills as an area that can accept and contribute to the need to build more housing through this rezoning. So I would appreciate the committee's support of this rezoning when you act later today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the last one to speak is Marcia Parnas, and I'm just going to ask if you guys could turn on the videos when you're testifying, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marcia Parnas, and thank you to all for the opportunity to speak in support of the temple's application. I have been an active member of RTFH for 25 years. It has been my family's spiritual home, where we have worshiped, learned, celebrated the holidays and lifecycle events, and been blessed to be part of a warm and caring community. What I also cherish about RTFH is that it has inspired and enabled my family and so many other families to do acts of tikkun olam, or repairing the world. The temple's very active social action team has done countless projects to improve the lives of those in the wider community. We have packed lunches to feed our neighbors at the Seventh Day Adventist Church in Corona. My daughter visited the elderly at Forest View Nursing Home. My son extended his bar mitzvah project volunteering for three years at the Common Point Queenswide with children on the autism spectrum. I have distributed clothes and food to the homeless in Manhattan with Midnight Run, spearheaded a virtual coat drive for New York Cares, given blood with the New York Blood Center, and coordinated with the Queens BP Office to help our teen youth group prepare lunches for the victims of Hurricane Ida. Our Immigration and Refugee Task Force has helped a Guatemalan family separated at the border settle nearby. Plus, Temple's Volunteer Vaccine Corps helped schedule COVID vaccines for dozens of seniors, transported them, and followed up after they received their shots. It's all been made possible by RTFH. Rezoning will allow the temple to remain viable, so it not only can fully serve our members, but also enable our caring temple family in turn to better our wider community. We are, in fact, doing just that by proposing a space that is ADA-compliant and provides much-needed affordable housing. Thank you for the time to tell you how important RTFH is to my family, my temple family, the community, and those we serve.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any council members with questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, the witness panel is now excused. For one last time, if there's anyone in here that wants to testify on this project, please see the sergeant at arms, and we're going to stand at ease for 30 seconds. Okay, there being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU's numbers 160 and 161 relating to the Reform Temple of Forest Hills rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LU's numbers 156 and 157 relating to the 58-02 Northern Boulevard rezoning proposal in Councilmember Wong's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone an existing R5 zoning district to an R6B/C2-2 zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant at arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. I would now like to toss over to Councilmember Wong to give her remarks. Councilmember Wong?
Good morning. Thank you so much, Chair Riley, and members of the public, as well as the development team. I'm looking forward to hearing your testimony on the proposed Lincoln dealership on Northern Boulevard. Currently, Northern Boulevard is a mix of manufacturing, commercial, and residential, and much of this area has not- Currently, Northern Boulevard is a mix of manufacturing, commercial and residential and much of this area has not been rezoned since the nineteen sixties. Sitting about a mile away from here is a proposed Innovation Queen site, which we all are familiar with because we were here for a very long hearing not too long ago, which will bring over three thousand units of residential housing to the Northern Boulevard corridor. It, just to give everyone a deep brief of what the current community update is, is that the constituents no longer want a piecemeal approach to land use, so Community Board Two has rejected this application with a resolution opposing all new auto-related uses on the Northern Boulevard corridor. They also most recently voted to form a working group to provide a task force for neighborhood rezoning requests, including Northern Boulevard as well as Animal Basin and other parts and Roosevelt Avenue and other parts of my district. This is really important because we've had over, just in one year, we had had one hundred sixty people injured and one resident was killed on our Northern Boulevard in the district. And they want to focus on putting the land towards making sure that we're building more residential housing as we this past week alone have opened three new homeless shelters. So now I am at a total of twenty-eight homeless shelters, over seven thousand people in the homeless shelter system in my district. So our city must make comprehensive plans to meet our urgent social goals, including more affordable housing, maximizing the number of protecting manufacturing space for local jobs as well as environmental goals and reducing traffic deaths to reduce injuries along those corridors. So I look forward to hearing the rest of the conversation as well as asking some of the questions that we have from the council. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Juan. Council, can you please call the first panel for this item?
So Frank, I'm gonna need your help because I have only three names. So Frank St. Jack, Joe Voltaggio, John Starks, and I'm missing one of you guys.
Michael Nocleario.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Council, please administer the affirmation.
Can you all please raise your right hand and answer the following question? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answer to all councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning Chair, good morning Chair Riley, Councilmember Juan and members of the subcommittee. My name is Frank St. Jack. I'm an associate with Ackerman LLP. We're Land Use Council for the project. We have a brief presentation, but I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant to make a brief statement before we jump into the presentation. So with that.
Hi, good afternoon Chairman Riley and members of the subcommittee, also Councilwoman Juan. My name is Joe Voltaggio and together with our partners, John Starks and Mike Nocleario, I'm here today as an applicant for the fifty-two oh-eight Northern Boulevard rezoning. Our land use attorney from Ackerman will give you a formal presentation, but I wanted to start with a few words about how this project came to be. I'm not a developer. I operate a small business that enjoy good success because we treat our customers and neighbors honestly and fairly. We wanted to grow our business with the Lincoln dealership and just as COVID was beginning to come into the city. In early twenty-twenty, we purchased this lot on Northern Boulevard. While others were running from the city, we doubled down on it. We picked the site for a few reasons. First, the location's near many other car dealerships, so we'll be able to fit in easily in the neighborhood. Second, this lot has sat abandoned and been eyesore for many years and we hope we'll be welcomed by neighbors to have a small-scale showroom. The format of this particular business will be different from many open-air dealerships. We will have a boutique showroom, which one of each model will be at the showroom, which is one of four. So that the shoppers who perhaps have done some research already online can come see the vehicles, choose features, finishes and speak with our sales representatives. We won't be doing any service at the site, won't be taking deliveries of vehicles, should have very little impact on traffic or parking congestion. Our representatives have met with residents in their surrounding blocks and I believe will be a good neighbor to them. We also have a union shop. You'll hear from our union partners, but we expect approximately twenty jobs to be created. These jobs will be split between salespeople and administrative personnel who are members of the United Service Workers Union. The associated repair work will be created jobs at our Jamaica facility where the United Auto Workers Union serve. I'll turn it over to Frank now, but I'd like to tell the subcommittee that as a business owner, we're eager to invest in Queens, eager to provide good union jobs and of course, improve the particular lot that has sat as, for very long as, you know, abandoned lot. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks Joe. Again, Frank St. Jack from Ackerman. Just to start off, we're seeking two land use actions in this application. A zoning map amendment to replace an R-five zoning district with an R-six B district with a C-two-two commercial overlay and a zoning text amendment that would establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area within the rezoning area. Next slide, please. The site fifty-eight oh-two Northern Boulevard is located on the south side of Northern Boulevard between Fifty-Eighth Street and Sixtieth Street. Is a fifty-two, excuse me, five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine square foot, irregularly shaped lot. It narrows to a width of approximately thirty-seven feet at Northern Boulevard, as you can see in this zoning map. The site is outlined in red and the surrounding area is located primarily within an R-five zoning district that was mapped back in nineteen sixty-one. There are M-one-one zoning districts established in nineteen sixty-one and nineteen sixty-six, mapped immediately to the west and then to the east of the R-five zoning district. Next slide, please. Despite this R-five zoning, this portion of Northern Boulevard where the development site is located is occupied almost entirely by non-conforming commercial uses shown in red and semi-industrial and industrial uses shown in purple on this land use map. Many are automobile-related uses, including sales and repairs, but not all. And conforming residential use, which is shown in yellow, is generally located at the mid-blocks beyond the Northern Boulevard block fronts. There are also some non-conforming industrial uses within the mid-block areas as well as community facility use, which is shown in blue. Conforming residential uses are generally two- and three-story, one- and two-family homes and smaller multifamily walk-up buildings. The applicant team selected the medium-density contextual R-six B zoning district that's proposed to align with this existing built context in the mid-block. Next slide, please. You can see the surrounding context in this aerial photograph. Again, along Northern Boulevard, despite the R-five zoning, you can see that it is entirely commercial or non-residential with residential in the mid-blocks to the north and south of Northern Boulevard. This is the historic development pattern for over sixty years from before the enactment of the zoning resolution in nineteen sixty-one and the establishment of the current zoning. Next slide, please. The five thousand two hundred and fifty-nine square foot site shown here is improved with a one-story former restaurant building with unenclosed parking that was built around nineteen thirty. While there was commercial use at the site since that time, since nineteen thirty, this restaurant closed more than ten years ago and zoning rules prohibit the building from being reactivated with a new commercial use. The existing building is in disrepair and cannot feasibly be converted to accommodate a new productive conforming use. New housing within the R-five is unlikely due to the site's small lot size, the R-five zoning that requires yards, limits lot coverage and has a high parking requirement and its location on busy Northern Boulevard. Next slide, please. Shown here on the zoning change map, on the left-hand side of the screen is the existing R-five zoning as well as the attributes of that zoning. And on the right-hand side is the proposed R-six B with a C-two-two commercial overlay zoning. The proposed rezoning to R-six B C-two-two would allow an increase from the existing R-five zoning district, FAR of one point two five, to the proposed R-six B C-two-two zoning district FAR of two point oh for commercial use or two point two for residential use under the mandatory inclusionary housing program. And an increase in the maximum building height from forty feet under the existing R-five zoning district to fifty-five feet above a forty-five-foot base height in the proposed R-six B zoning district. These increases in FAR in height are appropriate along a wide street like Northern Boulevard. Next slide, please. The proposed rezoning would facilitate the development of a two-story automobile sales showroom building with approximately eight thousand square feet of commercial floor area. This is about one point five two FAR. The building would rise to a height of twenty-one feet. Now, the proposed building is smaller than the permitted two point oh FAR because otherwise parking and loading requirements that cannot be accommodated on the small site would be triggered. Some of the features that Joe mentioned in his introduction of the site is that this is a new concept for automobile sales. It operates more like a retail store in contrast to the traditional automobile dealerships that line Northern Boulevard with large lots that also provide repairs. Repairs are not permitted pursuant to the zoning being sought here. The benefits of the proposed project include, in addition to redeveloping this vacant site, electric vehicle charging stations that will be made available to the public, some sustainability features, which I'll discuss on the next slide, new jobs, as Joe noted, onsite and offsite at the service facility. And as he noted, these are also union jobs. And the unions will be here today to discuss that further. Next slide, please. I noted that the site provides several sustainability features or the project provides several sustainability features that are shown here. In addition to the electric vehicle chargers at the rear of the site, there'll also be bike parking, solar panels on the roof, pervious pavement system in that it's technically a side yard, but at the rear of the site that will promote natural stormwater infiltration, reduce runoff. We're also looking into requesting from the Department of Transportation, the portion of the site that is, or sorry, the outside of the site, the sidewalk, there is an application that can be made to the Department of Transportation for a distinctive sidewalk design that incorporates permeable pavers, so we intend to do that. And we're also looking into a request for bio swales in the three tree pits for the new, the three new street trees that will be installed surrounding the site. Additionally, the architect has looked into reusable gray water for irrigation. We're providing landscaping surrounding the site as well as an additional green roof element using plantings on the roof level in addition to the solar array. We'll also note that the applicant has committed to the Queens Borough President's conditions to use porous concrete and passive landscaping, as I just mentioned. They also commit to working with Community Board Two to support environmental efforts and to work with Community Board Two on bike parking. Also note, as Councilmember Juan noted, we are aware of the Community Board's efforts in visioning Northern Boulevard. The applicant team would be happy to provide any support that we can to that effort. We certainly have a vested interest in improving Northern Boulevard. We believe that this project contributes to that effort, but we'd be happy to help in that regard. And then finally, the applicant also commits to the Queens Borough President's condition to prioritize the sale of electric vehicles and hybrids. The applicants can speak more to that specifically, but that's in line with Lincoln's push towards electrification of their entire fleet by twenty thirty. Next slide, please. And this is the final slide. Just in closing, I want to reinforce the land use rationale here for the rezoning, that the site may not be reactivated with a new commercial use. The existing building was built back in nineteen thirty. It's been vacant for more than ten years and is in a state of disrepair. There's essentially no conforming use that can occur today that makes sense from a financial feasibility perspective. Residential redevelopment of the site to that point is unlikely, given the small size, the regular shape, the zoning constraints, as well as its location on Northern Boulevard, which presents issues with respect to air quality, noise and light pollution for potential residents. Finally, and you'll hear testimony from surrounding neighbors, we've heard that this vacant site creates quality of life issues for the community. Not only is it an eyesore, as was described earlier, but it attracts vandalism, graffiti, dumping rodents and vermin and illegal parking. So the neighbors that we spoke to expressed support for this proposed development to eliminate these concerns by redeveloping the site. We touched on the fact that this is a unique boutique showroom that's distinct from a traditional dealership. Again, we believe this would operate more like a retail store, similar to the Tesla showrooms that are found in malls and shopping centers. And finally, we believe that the proposed R-six B C-two-two with MIH creates a precedent for future development along Northern Boulevard, establishing a mid-density contextual residential district with a commercial overlay, replacing nineteen sixty-one zoning as a forward-thinking way of addressing what's possible on Northern Boulevard. That concludes our, sorry, that concludes my portion of the presentation. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Starks for final comments.
Thank you Frank. Chairman Riley and members of the subcommittee, my name is John Starks. While so many of you may know me from playing with the New York Knicks, in recent years, I've been building a brand in the car industry in the great borough of Queens. With the committee's support, I'm looking forward to taking the next step with opening John Starks Lincoln at fifty-eight oh-two Northern Boulevard. My colleagues have described the project many benefits, but I'd like to say a few words about the brand that I've been working on to build. From my time with the Knicks and through the opening of John Starks Kia in Jamaica, Queens, it's clear how important it is to work with the people of your neighborhood who support the business. Yes, we're in the business of selling cars, but we want to make our customers to, we want our customers to know us and know that we care about the community where we work. This philosophy helped lead to the sales of a thousand cars in our first year, an accomplishment that is personally satisfying while also helping provide good taxes and jobs for the city of New York. To this end, I've been very active in giving back. My John Starks Foundation opened in nineteen ninety-four and I've been giving back to the city of New York and the tri-state area. I think it's very important that when you do things within the city and people help you, you are qualified to give back to the people that does things to get you support. In saying this, the dealership also have been active in charitable giving in the local community. In twenty twenty-two, John Starks Kia, Lincoln of Queens sponsored and participated in Southeast Queen Friendsgiving Dinner, made a significant contribution to the Floating Hospital, the Greater Allen Church and Queensborough Unico. We also purchased two hundred brand-new coats this season, supporting Operation Warm Coat Drive. When we open, when we open at fifty-eight oh-two Northern Boulevard, you have our commitment to seek the same positive relationships with our surrounding community. Thank you.
And that closes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brother Starks. It's a pleasure seeing you today. I have a few questions that I'm gonna toss it over to Councilmember Juan. Similar to Councilmember Juan, I represent District Twelve where Boston Road is filled with a lot of car dealerships. So I actually got my car from Northern Boulevard at Queens Volkswagen, actually, so don't tell my constituents that. But just stating that, I'm very interested to know how this is different from a traditional dealership. Besides having the cars in the driveways, like how would this run? Can you just give me a brief description on how would this dealership be different from the rest of the dealerships on that strip?
So thank you. That's a great question. So I took my family on a road trip about two years ago when this concept was actually opened in Scottsdale, Arizona, and it was in a mall. And then we went to California. We saw the concept in California also. And it's in another shopping area. It's not actual car row type setting. And basically, people come in, they look at the colors on TVs, the screens, and the salespeople have the iPads and they go through colors. And then like everything else nowadays with Amazon, everything else, the car will go to their home and office. So we actually deliver the car. And then we also DocuSign, which people don't even have to sign their contracts at the dealership. They could actually sign it straight on their phone. So they actually do their fine. So they actually do their finance contract, everything, straight all over the internet. And then they pick up their car either at their home or office, which is benefit to them. To have this concept of, you know, seeing different colors and, you know, one model of each, it's good to just show the cars out, but there's not a test drive. That stuff could actually be done at your home office, too. And on the service side, right now, Lincoln has invested in pickup and delivery, which is a red cap system. So you don't even bring your car in for service anymore. You actually call up, you ask for a service, they send you a loaner car to your house or office, and then they bring the car into Jamaica, where our local union actually takes care of the cars, services the cars, and then it brings it back to your home and office. The inconvenience factor of going from store to store is, and, you know, dealership to dealership, is the thing in the past. The thing in the future is making it convenient so people could spend time with their family and not have to worry about their car anymore. And that's the new concept that Lincoln came up with this boutique.
And this will limit the cars on that strip as well?
Yeah, there's, there's, we keep four cars there. It's one of each model, and they just see the car, you know, their model. They won't see any colors. Everything is on the swatches. And it's actually, Lincoln sends out a, their bible every year, and it's a swatch, you know, for every color they have. And you actually look at the colors there on the swatch panel, and then you decide which one you want. And you feel like you're in the car driving, so there's no test driving. Those are the things that you don't do.
With this new concept, do you think this is something that will be adapted by your neighbors if this is approved?
I would hope so, sir, because, I mean, my personal opinion is, I don't believe you need to have a big showroom anymore with, with, you know, big buildings with the showrooms with multiple cars, multiple colors. There's, there's no need for that. You know, our Kia store that John and, and me and Mike opened up is very small. Years ago, that would have never been allowed. But with this new concept of three cars on the showroom floor, they allowed it. And, and basically, that's where everything is going to right now.
Okay. How would the applicant use this site if the rezoning were not to be approved?
So I, you know, defer to the guys, but they, one of the first tasks that my office performed was evaluating, you know, what the potential development at this site was. So it's, it's within this R-five zoning. The only allowable use would be residential or community facility. And based on due diligence that was, that was performed with my office and the architect, it was determined that conforming as of right residential development or community facility development would not be financially feasible. I think absent the relief from the zoning, I'm not sure that you guys have figured out what you can do.
Yeah, I've never, unfortunately, I never thought about that because, to be honest with you, I've been so gung ho on opening the store, creating jobs and creating sales tax revenue, and actually property tax revenue for the city. I, I, you know, I've invested my whole life in Queens. My wife was born in Queens. So our business is in Queens, and to be honest with you, I want to stay here and prosper. And I just hope that this, you know, this will come to, to be able to open. Other than that, I, I'm, I'm a loss of words.
Right, and, and so just to clarify, my, my portion of the answer, that there was never an intent to develop the site with anything other than the dealership. It was just part of the initial diligence to evaluate what could be done absent the rezoning.
Thank you. I have, just have two more questions that I'll toss over to Councilmember Juan. Can you describe the environmental sustainability? I think you spoke about this briefly.
Sure.
But can you just describe in detail the environmental sustainability? Because I, every time you think of sustainability, I'm not sure if this is a flood zone, but very cognizant of what's happening in Queens with water resiliency. So can you just please describe the environmental sustainability features on the proposed development?
Absolutely. So as far as sustainability goes, there would be new street trees planted, new landscaping, solar panels on the roof, and potentially other green features on the roof. It's contemplated that there would be additional landscaping on the roof to add a green roof effect. With respect to resiliency, the, the portion of the site that, where there's a yard required, it's essentially a ten-foot strip at the very rear of the site, would have permeable pavers to allow water infiltration, to keep that rainwater out of the sewers. And we're also looking into, on the city-owned sidewalk that surrounds the site, the entire sidewalk will need to be rebuilt pursuant to a builder's pavement plan with the Department of Transportation. One option that they allow, and it's subject to D O T's discretion, is something called a distinctive sidewalk, where you can incorporate a permeable-type paver on the sidewalk. There's, there's specifications, and it requires D O T approval, but we think that that's something that could be incorporated here. And finally, because three new street trees are being added, those tree pits could be, tree pits with bio swales, which also capture stormwater and keep it out of the sewer system.
And one last question. Community Board expressed concern about this proposal encouraging cars. How would you respond to this concern?
So I'll, I'll start, and I'll actually turn that over to Mike to my right to, I guess, flesh out the answer. You know, there, there's, I think in certain interests, our, our proposal here aligns with, with some of the concerns that we've heard about the application, and I'm sure you'll hear today in form of testimony. I will note that, you know, the, the vote at Community Board Two was essentially split. It was, it was, you know, not, not an overwhelming majority opposed. And, you know, this application is contemplating an automobile showroom, albeit a new boutique one. So I, I recognize that there's not going to be a meeting of the minds with respect to the overall use, but I think what we've done here is incorporate sustainability features and this new boutique model that we think will ameliorate some of the concerns. And we hope that it can really bridge the gap between the traditional automobile dealership that's seen on the street and, you know, more forward-thinking vision for Northern Boulevard. That said, I'm sorry, I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
I mean, we agree wholeheartedly that, you know, there are many ways to improve pedestrian safety and ways to encourage fewer cars on the road. It's extremely important in the community. But denying this application isn't one of them. If a person wants or needs a car for their mode of transportation or for their business, they're going to get one. If it's not from this dealership, they'll purchase a vehicle elsewhere because they feel they need or they want it. And with respect to pedestrian safety, you want people driving Lincolns. Every Lincoln is equipped with the most advanced standard, top-of-the-line crash avoidance technology. And we all know that the path to fuel cars on the road is investing in alternative forms of transportation, including mass transit and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. But denying this application will do absolutely nothing to keep a single car off the road. What it will do is leave the neighbors with a derelict eyesore. It will also deny the union jobs our store will generate and the taxes we pay to the city. Finally, I'm sure it's stymie other small businesses, business owners like us who decided to take a financial risk and invest in this neighborhood and this city. So while we, we absolutely care about pedestrian safety, this, this isn't appropriate.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan.
Thank you so much to the whole entire team, and thank you for everything you shared about all the give back that you do to the community in Southeast Queens. We really appreciate that. I do have some questions. And I just want to point out that when initially the land use item was voted down in Community Board, it was split. When I went back to speak with all the Community Board members, especially those who were potentially in favor of this project, they are no longer, and they unanimously have passed a new resolution in support of opposing any further development of any auto-related use on Northern Boulevard. And now they are calling for a neighborhood rezoning for Northern Boulevard, especially because of the Innovation Queens rezoning with the three thousand residential uses. And because of the increase in homelessness, they want to see residential rezonings remain residential, even if it's R-five and of low density. But I do want to ask, these are some of the questions that the Community Board members have raised to me. If everyone can turn to page four of your proposal, if you look at the surrounding area, this area actually, not only is it residential, commercial, and manufacturing, it actually has a lot of places of spiritual worship. So within walking distance of this car dealership, first, the closest one is the Tibetan Woodside Community Center. The Tibetan Community Woodside Center has daily rituals where they do prayer circles around the vicinity of the Tibetan Community Center, where we have multiple complaints, like the one hundred sixty people who have been injured that was a resident and somebody killed on Northern Boulevard corridor. The grandmothers who do the spiritual walkthroughs have also made multiple complaints of almost dying and being hit by the car, not because they're walking on the street, but because of the parking on the sidewalk. So if you look at the pictures, the surrounding area is covered with cars of illegal parking on the sidewalk that you could see on the right-hand corner. So we're looking at page four, Chair Riley of the document. So I just want to make it clear that this area of the surrounding area is not just residential or commercial or manufacturing, it's actually places of worship. So within one block north, the Tibetan Community Center is there where grandmothers do daily prayer walks, and during that, they almost get hit by cars, and that's why we have more than one hundred sixty injuries and one, one death of a pedestrian. Because if you look at your right-hand corner, there are cars parked on the sidewalk. So automotive uses are illegal parking, and that is why the community is so sour and angry, because they cannot use the sidewalk. And in addition to the Tibetan Community Center, we have Sri Guru Ravi Das Gurdwara for our Sikh community, and then we also have the Golshan Terrace and Sri Devi Adham, which is a Hindu temple, both in the vicinity. So there are four places of worship that use their sidewalks for their community needs, and the sidewalks have been taken away from them that you could see in that very image. And one of the questions that the Community Board has raised to me about this is, they said that when they look on Google Map for Ford of Queens and John Starks' Kia, both have vehicles parked on the sidewalk the same way that we see in this image on page four. And they are asking, are you still storing vehicles in the public right-of-way on the street in your Jamaica locations as viewed in Google Maps?
At John Starks' Kia, no. At Ford Lincoln of Queens, you are correct, there are some sidewalks that are being used because I have to use, to get the cars in and out of the floor all the time, I have to use the sidewalk. So to pull a car out in the showroom that has that old concept showroom, which has ten cars, I have to move all ten cars out. I don't own any of the properties next door to it. So I gotta put them on the sidewalk and then put them back when I get the car out from the sale. At John Starks' Kia, which is that new concept where there's only four vehicles, we don't need to use the sidewalk because the traffic coming in and out of the showroom is, is pretty much nothing. So we don't actually use the sidewalks at all to get cars in and off the showroom floor.
So I just want to make it clear that this is not just about pedestrian safety, but it's about public use of public land, that people want to have their sidewalk spaces that are safe without having fear that they will get hit by a car when they're doing prayer walks, as well as making sure that they, that in a district-like mine where we are the most transportation-rich with the highest amount of ferry, subway, bus, rapid bus transit, as well as bike lanes, that they want to make sure that we are moving away from being car-centric in Northern Boulevard, that it's not about just purchasing cars or preventing people from purchasing, but this is really about pedestrian safety and not just pedestrians, but also cyclists and other modes of transportation. So I also want to ask.
Councilmember Juan, if I may, just to add a response to that. With respect to fifty-eight oh two Northern, we described some of the work we'd be doing to improve that sidewalk and the streetscape, including attempting to, the pervious pavement on the city sidewalk, as well as the street trees and the landscaping. There is no intention to illegally park cars at fifty oh two Northern. That's, you know, we recognize that it's not permitted, but it would not be part of the operational plan. We're happy to work with your office or with the city if there's a way to incorporate barriers that would not impede pedestrian safety, if there's ways to expand the landscaping that we plan through revocable consent with the Department of Transportation. We're happy to do that to actually physically prevent, you know, cars from, from, we don't believe that this will be an issue, but to ameliorate concern overlapping an issue and actually physically prevent that from happening.
Thank you. I think it would be important to make sure that the Community Board hears this, but again, their, the community's overall perspective is that they, their resolution was that Northern Boulevard will no longer oppose any further development of auto-related use on Northern Boulevard corridor, because the way that it is currently being used today, especially with the increased number of residential housing that will come, that they want to have a neighborhood rezoning to make sure that this is for people's livelihood and for public use instead of being an automated parking lot for everybody. So we'll make sure that the Community Board hears that.
And we're happy to, to put that in a letter to your office and the, and the Community Board, that commitment, and we can detail that further. We'll just need to speak with the architect about what's possible there.
Okay. And then, can you be more specific about how many jobs will be on the site?
Sure. It's, it's about thirteen jobs onsite between sales and administrative folks, and that would generate about seven service jobs offsite, both of which are unions, two different unions, and those, those unions would be here to speak today.
And out of the thirteen jobs onsite, how many of them are union?
Thirteen.
Okay. And when you made the decision, did you consider the negative impact of the auto industry's uses in the surrounding area, which is what the community is upset about?
So we, we did perform a full environmental assessment in connection with the zoning application. It was determined that there would be no significant adverse impacts with, with respect to this specific use. There are environmental designations that are being placed on the site with, with respect to ensuring that the commercial use of the site protects visitors from, from, you know, potential noise impacts from Northern Boulevard, as well as air quality for the site itself and neighbors for both residential or potentially, or, excuse me, for commercial or potentially residential use. With, with respect to the use itself, I think the thinking, you know, given the nature of the applicant's business and their business plan, their thought was that this showroom, and albeit it's, it's not a traditional showroom like the ones surrounding, but fits with the context of, you know, the more traditional dealerships within the area. This is a node for auto sales, and the idea was to use this rezoning, again, with a contextual mid-density residential district and a commercial overlay, to fit this new model in with the existing context of, of auto sales. And I'll, it's like, Joe, you wanted to.
Just one thing that I, I wanted to comment on, that, you know, we've been approached many times with a question about hours of operation. One of the hours of operation of normal dealerships are from nine to nine, and then you have deliveries that happen to ten, eleven o'clock, and nighting the place is open a lot longer because people are taking delivery at that location. This site will be open from nine to seven, Monday through Saturday, and will not be open on Sunday. So at this juncture, it's, it's a, it's like a retail establishment where it's not a busy site, it's not gonna, you know, be, have an issue with the neighborhood, I believe, because there'll be less automotive, you know, for their night.
And, and I mentioned the environmental assessment statement, but it evaluated, you know, the, the potential traffic demand. As, as I think you noted, Councilmember Juan, this is a transit-oriented area. There's not expected to be an increase in, in traffic or parking generated by this, the showroom that, again, operates more like a retail establishment. And as Joe noted, it doesn't have all the attributes of car delivery, car storage, repairs, et cetera. That's all handled offsite through a, you know, customer-oriented. you know, home and office delivery system.
Thank you so much. I don't have any further questions, but I just want to underscore the community board and the community's request that this no, this area no longer be used for any further development of auto-related use on Northern Boulevard corridor, mainly because of public safety reasons, because of the school, as well as places of faith and just residential areas surrounding it, as well as the new development that is coming in for Innovation Queens, increasing a transformation of 3,000 new residential buildings, as well as other residential developments that are coming along the corridor. So I look forward to continuing the conversation, but the community board has made it very clear on where they stand, and I support the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Juan, and I don't have any questions for this applicant panel, but I do have a statement. I share the same type of district as Councilmember Juan stated, and we also have the issues with cars on the sidewalks and kind of driving around. But I'm optimistic, and I feel like what you guys are trying to do will hopefully transition to the other dealerships on that block. So I think when you do have the conversation with the community board, you could address the issues that they're having in Jamaica Ave with the cars being on the sidewalk. We do understand that you have to get in and out the showroom, but maybe pick times where it's not heavy traffic, like in the morning time where kids are walking to school, because that's what happens in my district. But what you're doing is something that I feel like a lot of dealerships in New York City should start doing, because it gives you more options, it's safer, we could utilize more space in those areas, because you wouldn't be taking up a, a whole lot for cars. So I think this is a very optimistic project. So I think when you're having the conversation and your language that you speak, you speak to the community board, understand where they're coming from, because Innovation Queens is a huge project. There is going to be a lot of density in the area. Think about how they feel about cars being on the sidewalk, but what you're trying to do will prevent that. So I think that's something that you need to kind of emphasize on. So with that being said, you guys are excused, and thank you so much for coming on today.
Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you, Councilmember Juan. We look forward to working with your office and with Community Board Two to hopefully earn your support.
Thank you. Counselor, are there any members of the public who is to testify on 5802 Northern Boulevard proposal, in person or remotely?
Chair, we have a couple witnesses in person. We can call on those first, and then we have a few online. So let me just make those quick announcements for the online witnesses. So you'll be, for those of you who are waiting to testify, just, first I'll start by saying just remember to turn on your camera, because we had some technical issues with the prior panels. But you will be called in panels of three or four. If you're a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name and prepare to speak when the chair or I say that you may begin. Please also know that once all of your panelists in your group have completed their testimony remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group, and the next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council website.
Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the sergeant arms has started the clock. The first panel we'll be calling up is, excuse me if I mispronounce your name, Nicholas De Palita and Michael Giuseppe. The first panelist to begin will be Nicholas De Palita. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Nicholas.
De Palito.
De Palito, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Chairman Riley and members of the zoning subcommittee. My name is Nicholas De Palito, Business Agent of United Service Workers Union, Local 355 IUJAT. Local 355 represents thousands of union employees and over 300 retail car dealerships in the Northeast. I myself handle 50-plus of those dealerships. Over the years, I have developed a good working relationship with this ownership team, and I greatly appreciate and value their partnership. Together, we have come to, we have come to agreements made up of more than fair wages and solid benefit packages. We have been successful and have always been able to work together to resolve any issues that may arise in the workplace. I am here today because Local 355 strongly supports the rezoning of 5802 Northern Boulevard. As a business agent in the retail automotive industry, I have witnessed firsthand as to how many jobs one showroom can create and how many families it can support. Unless you have worked in this industry, you may not be aware of the chain reaction, if you will, that is created when a salesman sells a car. There's the finance team who helps the customer secure financing to purchase or lease the car, the detailer who cleans the car after it is sold, the technician who will eventually service the car, the parts counterman who will assist in providing necessary parts to the technician to properly fix the car, the service writer who will communicate directly with the customer as to what the technician recommends to be fixed. The showroom makes all of this possible and is the key to creating this wide range of job opportunities. I understand that this ownership team is open to working with the local council member on hiring people from the community, and Local 355 would be happy to collaborate in this effort. At this site, we have an opportunity to expand the union workforce and bring all of the associated benefits back to the community. On behalf of USWU 355, I sincerely hope the subcommittee will vote unanimously to approve this rezoning in support of a new business in the community and the workers who will be the key to its success. Sorry for the-
Sorry, go ahead. Uh, the next panelist, Michael, you may begin.
Chairman Riley, members of the zoning-
Michael, just need you to get on the mic real quick. Yeah, please.
Chairman Riley, members of the zoning-
Mike, just put it down real quick too. Got you. Thank you, man. Go ahead.
Testing, good?
Got you, got you. You're good.
Mr. Stark, great to see you, sir.
Chairman Riley and members of the zoning subcommittee, my name is Michael D. Giuseppe, and I proudly represent the hard-working members of Local 259 of the United Auto Workers Union. Our union ensures our members have good wages, good benefits and fair working conditions. Auto-related use is our lifeblood. I hope the subcommittee will support the rezoning of 5802 Northern Boulevard. The proposed showroom for John Stark's Lincoln will be linked to the service and repair jobs carried out by our members at the businesses Jamaica facility. When a new showroom, like the one that is proposed, opens up, it means that our members will have a new reliable stream of customers that need service. I know city council members are strong supporters of, of union labor. That being the case, I would hope this would be an easy rezoning to facilitate, which would benefit the union community and the greater community. On behalf of Local 259, I would appreciate you taking our membership into consideration in your vote. We strongly urge your support for the rezoning. Personally, I'd like to add, as a former employee of this company, that you're not just rezoning, but welcoming a family-run business, excuse me, that embraces the meaning of being stakeholders in the community. After Hurricane Sandy, many of us, myself included, we were left unemployed and homeless. Despite having one of their facilities completely destroyed, the employers didn't lay off one employee. Let me repeat that. Despite having one of their facilities destroyed, they didn't lay off one employee. So I'm really proud to represent them today and, and speak out on their behalf, because that, that's the type of business that I'm asking you to embrace in this community. That's, I promise you, this decision that you and your neighbors will come to embrace, you, you'll be grateful for it someday. This is a stakeholder, family-run business. And I'm sorry I went over. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Juan, do you have a question for this panel? With that being said, you're excused. Thank you so much. Counselor, do we have any members online who wish to testify?
Yes, so-
Chair, we'll call on the first panel. And again, I'll just remind you to turn on your camera when you're called to speak.
The first panel we'll call is Rosamond Giantos, Laura Shepherd and Riley Owens. Excuse me if I bop your name. Rosamara, you may begin first.
Starting time.
Hi, my name is Bachman Rosamond Giannuzzos. I've lived in this community for over 50 years, and I am strongly opposed to the rezoning of 5802 Northern Boulevard to allow the construction of what I can only see as cynically described as a boutique automobile dealership. As Councilmember Juan said, we lost a neighbor, an elderly pedestrian was killed, and it was killed by the same kind of vehicle that they are proposing to sell. And they did acknowledge that during the hearings at the community board. And, and, and I want to say, I am elderly, as you can do the math, I've lived here over 50 years. And, and I'm saying to myself, could this have been me? So that's just part of this story, though. There's so many, the, the community board was very strong in, in saying we don't want any uses, car-related uses to, and we want to transform this community. 60 years of these kinds of non-conforming uses, zonings, is enough. The developers, when they purchased this property, they knew they'd have to get a zoning variance, and you, you, you know, they can't, there's no assurance that that would happen. I don't have any sympathy for that. They do argue that they're entitled to a zoning variance, because there are already so many other non-conforming uses. That argument, I believe, to be specious. It's like saying that you can go ahead and lie, as we've heard recently in the public realm, because everybody does it. And we need to make change. The developers, even though they're a family business and so on, they really have no commitment to a base in our community.
I'm exposed.
Acknowledged, excuse me. They acknowledged during their earlier hearings that they were coming here to Queens because they couldn't find an affordable property in Manhattan. So our community seeks to reverse the trend, to reduce the car sales and servicing operations, and to replace them with desperately needed housing and supportive businesses. In addition to the huge residential Innovation Queens-
Rosamond, I just need you to wrap it up.
Okay. There's also going to be a large high school built four blocks, it's being built four blocks away. So we need to, the best way to support the revisioning for Northern Boulevard is just not to build this dealership. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next witness to testify is Laura Shepherd. Laura, please have your video on, and you may begin.
Starting time.
I strongly oppose the ULP application for the Lincoln dealership at 5802 Northern Boulevard and urge this committee to vote it down as well. I'm a Woodside resident and member of CB2, though speaking as an individual. This dealership is an illogical and ludicrous use of transit-accessible land that is currently zoned residential amidst a housing crisis. In fact, CB2's Land Use Committee has convened a task force to discuss specific asks for a broader rezoning for the entire corridor to prioritize affordable housing, local businesses and green space. To date, alternative uses that would better serve the community needs or create green jobs were not seriously considered for the site. The applicant's business and products are inappropriate, and no one is fooled by their attempts to greenwash or claims that this concept will be different. The applicant failed to identify an appropriately-zoned lot where they could have proceeded as of right, and they are not entitled to expand the footprint of the auto industry in New York City, where the majority of residents do not drive, and so many of us advocate for a dramatic reduction in the number and size of vehicles on our streets. Western Queens has ample public transportation options and is striving to become more walkable and bikeable. However, we suffer from high rates of traffic violence, and Northern Boulevard is a vision-zero priority corridor. Since January of 2015, 1,015 road users were injured and one killed on Northern Boulevard just west of the BQE. Last April, 89-year-old Yutma Setso was killed by an SUV driver while walking nearby on 48th Street. East of the BQE, several children and seniors were killed walking, including 19-year-old Sarah Perez, who was killed by a pickup truck driver on the Northern Boulevard sidewalk outside of an auto business. We cannot stem the tide of traffic violence by continuing to allocate land for these businesses, which abuse our public space by driving and parking on our sidewalks and bike, and bike lanes and bus stops, making it difficult and dangerous for pedestrians, cyclists and transit users to traverse their neighborhoods while drivers continue to speed through. Illegal parking is already the number-one complaint category in Community Board Two, where existing auto businesses are historically bad neighbors. We have also observed that this applicant operates his Jamaica dealership in a similar manner. SUVs are chronically parked and driven on the sidewalk. This applicant also claims that they cannot hold Lincoln accountable for their products, which average well under 25 miles per gallons in city, which will contribute unnecessary emission, climate-causing emissions, changing emissions and air pollution. 13 of the 17 children killed in New York City in 2022 were killed by SUVs, pickup trucks, vans and school buses. And this is one block from an elementary school, PS 152, several other neighborhood schools, including the yet-to-open 3,000-seat high school on 54th Street. Our neighbors-
Miss Shepherd, can you, you could wrap it up.
Sure. Our neighbors deserve better. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. The next witness is Riley Owens. Riley, you may begin. Please have your camera on.
Starting time.
Thank you very much to the city council for hearing my testimony today. I am also a member of Community Board Two, but I'm speaking for myself only. I live in Woodside, a few blocks from the site, and I am opposed to the rezoning. Woodside and the other neighborhoods around the site are densely residential and getting more dense, filling a need for more housing for all New Yorkers. A Street Easy report called "New York City Neighborhoods to Watch" listed Woodside, Subny Side and Elmhurst in the top 10 neighborhoods in New York City attracted new residents. A story at Jackson Heights and Long Island City have been growing exponentially for years. Northern Boulevard is a river that cuts through the heart of most of these neighborhoods. Yet unlike a natural river, Northern Boulevard serves nobody who lives near it. A blighted stretch of car dealerships, automotive shops, gas stations and car washes, in spite of the fact that most of the residents around it don't own cars and will never be in the market for a new car. Woodside around this potential rezoning site is a community underserved by new housing and underserved by the services that support neighborhoods. It is also overrun with automobiles parked on all of our sidewalks and in our bike lanes and crosswalks. My young children are unsafe everywhere, as cars and SUVs grow bigger and heavier and encroach on their safe spaces. This site is zoned for residential and needs to be built residential. And as I am speaking before the city council, I appeal to you to create a better future for Northern Boulevard than what is currently there. The hundreds of homes and new businesses at Innovation Queens is a great start, but we need no more auto dealerships and auto shops who are sprawling and traditionally bad neighbors as they drive and park on our city sidewalks everywhere, all the time. In the heart of Queens is growing neighborhoods and near the subways and protected bike lanes that bring workers to and from Manhattan every day. We need more dense housing and grocery stores and restaurants and flower shops and theaters and parks. 5802 Northern Boulevard is centered between an elementary school and a massive new high school. It's near a subway stop. It's near Paseo Park on 34th Avenue, New York City's largest new park project in years. It's zoned for residential and it's needed for residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Counselor Juan, you have any questions for this applicant panel? This applicant panel is now excused. Thank you. The next panel we'll be calling up is Mary Catherine Madden and Janet Ryan. The first witness to speak is Mary Catherine Madden. Mary, you may begin. Please have your camera on.
Starting time.
Mary, if you could hear me, you may begin. Janet, Janet Ryan, if you can hear me, you may begin. Please have your camera on.
Hello?
Yes, I, we hear you, Janet. Can you please put your camera on?
Yes.
Thanks so much. You can go ahead. We'll get you right after, Mary. Sorry. Go ahead, Janet.
All right. Chairman Riley, Councilmember Juan and the members of the subcommittee, my name is Janet Ryan, and I am a 30-year resident of 60th Street here in Woodside. My house is about 500 feet from the site that's being discussed. I wanted to have this opportunity to support the applicant's rezoning request and to support their business. Before I begin to speak, I just wanted to let you know that two community members that registered to speak came over to my house so that they could use my technology. That is Rita Manten and Tom, Thomas Ryan. So if they could be scheduled sometime after me or Mary, it'd be appreciated. I'll just call them to this, to this computer. Okay. I've lived here in this neighborhood for 30 years, and all of my kids were born and raised here, and I've been very active in the community- and raised here, and I've been very active in the community. The site being discussed is at the very end of my block and has been vacant for at least ten years. It has been a terrible eyesore. Everything else around, surrounding it is, is lovely. It's a lovely community. Taco Bell has been a great neighbor. Everyone around there has been, has been great, except this one horrible site. It's constant, heavy graffiti on it, vandalism, it's encouraging dumping rats, and there are cars that do park on that property that I don't know where they come from. Speaking of pedestrian safety, I avoid walking at that corner at night. And I'll tell, tell my kids not to, to walk there because it is completely unlit. Who knows if anybody. Okay. I would be thrilled if a reputable company like the one proposed would put a business on the site. I think that their willingness to do the landscaping and the proposed green efforts are, are indications that they would be nice neighbors.
Thank, Janet, thank you, Janet. Can you, can you wrap it up for us, please? Thank you.
Sure. I just want to say that under the current zoning, nobody has expressed any interest in that site for the ten, for ten years, and I think it would continue to remain vacant and an eyesore. So, thank you. I ask that you approve the rezon.
Thank you, Janet. The next witness to speak will be Mary. Mary, can you please unmute yourself and you may begin?
Starting time.
My name is Mary Catherine Madden. I am a nurse practitioner at Elmhurst Hospital, and I am a resident of Fifty-Eighth Street for my entire life. I bought my own home on that block thirty years ago, and my parents lived there before me. As a member of the Surgery Department at Elmhurst Hospital, I am acutely aware of safety issues. As a pedestrian, I walk to work every day. I am a bicyclist. I, I use public transportation, and I am a car owner. I think that the safety issues that have been described by pedestrians, a lot of that has been ameliorated over the years by delayed walklights and turning lanes specifically on our corner. I appreciate Council Number One talking about the multicultural areas, but as somebody that went to PS one fifty-two, that went to Corpus Christi, that walked those streets and that continues to walk those streets, I believe that there are safety structures in there. And additionally, Northern Boulevard is a major thoroughfare, but in this grid system that we have, Thirty-Fourth Avenue, Thirty-Second Avenue, Thirty-First Avenue are perfectly safer and less congested areas for people to be walking. And the other thing is that when they talk about driver safety, you know, we have a lot of new drivers that immigrate to this country, and they are adult-learned drivers. And I think that driver education could be much better in New York City, and that a lot of the issues that we deal with as far as poor, as, as accidents are related to poor driver education. So, I highly support this business. I believe that it is a low impact. I believe that they will be good neighbors. I believe that this, you know, this business has actually been empty for going on to fifteen years. It's been fifteen years almost that the restaurant has closed. And I, I do believe that they will be a clean, pleasant, a new vision for this type of business. They'll be a model for the current car industry that's there, that we'll be able to see. So, thank you very much. I highly support this, the approval of the change in zoning so that Lincoln can open their dealership there, their dealership boutique. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. I believe Councilmember Juan has a question. Councilmember Juan?
I don't have a question. I just have a statement that blaming car traffic deaths and crashes on immigrants is xenophobic, and I do not condone any sort of sentiment in that. Thank you.
I don't think that, I think that you're twisting what I was saying, Councilwoman Juan. What I was saying is that when you have, when, when adults immigrate to a new area and they're learning how to drive, that, that, that the amount of education that is currently set up for driver education is very small.
Do you have, do you have data or evidence statistically on proving that it is new immigrant drivers that are causing traffic death?
I'm talking, I'm talking about adult drivers.
For adult drivers, do you have evidence?
I'm talking about new adult drivers.
Do you have evidence that new adult drivers are, one, immigrants, and, two, that they are the leading cause of traffic death and, and crashes in New York City to make that claim on the record?
I'm talking about adult drivers.
We, thank you, Mary. I, I, I believe Councilmember Juan is insinuating.
I dedicated my life to serving the people of Queens, and I do not appreciate what Dr., what Ms. Juan was insinuating about me.
Excuse me, Mary.
And I want an apology.
Excuse me, Mary. I, I, I think what Councilmember Juan was insinuating with the comment, stating that people who migrate here are the sole responsibility.
That is not what I said.
For accidents is something that won't be tolerated, um, being stated. So that's why I think she's trying to insinuate.
That is not what I said.
It's all right.
That is a hundred percent not what I said.
No problem, and, and we appreciate you coming here to testify. The next witness that will be testifying on this panel, excuse me, this panel isn't done, is Thomas Ryan. Thomas, if you could hear me, you can unmute yourself and please have your video on. Thank you.
Starting time.
Thomas coming to this, to this right now. Come on.
Sorry, we changed one terminal here.
No problem. Go ahead, Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Chairman Riley, Councilmember Juan, my name is Thomas Ryan. I live at thirty-three forty-seven Sixtieth Street, two hundred feet from this posed property. I also have CPA practice. I also am a member of Community Board One, which is just across the street from Northern Boulevard. I am also a member of the Northern Woodside Coalition, and speaking in favor of this proposal. As you know, you've been active for over thirty years, and we watch this property, which has been abandoned for more than a decade, becoming a major eyesore and otherwise beautiful area. The site has been a target of dumping, vandalism, and graffiti. We support the applicant's plan to develop the site with a small auto showroom, which we think would be appropriate for the block and benefit the community. Because the site has been baked for so long, the zoning prevents any new development besides housing, rezoning is required for commercial use of the property. Since Northern Boulevard is heavily trafficked, we feel the site would be a poor place for housing. Without rezoning approval, we expect the site to continue to remain an eyesore to the community. We also feel that a proposal for a small showroom could be appropriate to building with a lot, that, without a lot or without onsite repairs. The focus on electric vehicles and the availability of electric vehicle charging stations, solar panels, landscaping, and the permeability of the surrounding area, we were infected by the Irma storm, and we had a lot of flooding in this area, including my, my home, my office. Matters like this would help that remediation. For these reasons, we support rezoning. We hope that you will too. And just to add a few comments at the time that I have remaining, we did submit a petition from Sixtieth.
Has expired.
I'm sorry? We did submit a petition from Sixtieth Street of twelve residents. We also have here in front of me, here, a petition with ten or six or fifteen.
Thank you, Thomas. We appreciate your testimony. Thank you. The next witness to testify, testify is Rita Manten. Rita, if you can hear me. Oh, Rita's there too. All right.
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna have to make y'all show y'all driver's license.
Good morning.
Go ahead, Rita.
Hi. My name is Rita Manten, and I'm a lifelong resident of Woodside, living in the area under discussion. Since nineteen seventy-two, I've lived at thirty-three thirty Fifty-Eighth Street between Northern Boulevard and Broadway, less than half a block from the site in question. About fifteen years ago, the former business, Il Filice, left, and the very oddly-shaped property has remained for sale and vacant since. Over the years, I've seen the building deteriorate, vandalized, and graffiti. Every so often, a volunteer anti-graffiti group is contacted, and they paint the outside. While this ameliorates the graffiti for a while, the paint colors unfortunately never match, and the graffiti takes place all over again anyway. Of course, the vandalization of the existing building only gets worse as time goes on. Broken windows, broken facades, unkempt property, et cetera. What an eyesore. It seems to me that if this was a viable piece of oddly-shaped property for housing, it would have been scooped up long ago. My concern and hope is that this abandoned building be demolished and replaced with something more useful and fitting in with the neighborhood's decor. Guess what? Which is numerous car dealerships along the commercial strip of Northern Boulevard in Woodside since before I was even born over seventy-five years ago. I understand the current proposal for the space is low-profile and by a reputable entity. Currently, the space is an abandoned, useless, infested eyesore, which will continue down the sa, that same path if the rezoning, which will allow a new car showroom, is not approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. This is the last of the panel. Do we have any councilmembers with questions? No questions, but just a really quick statement. We do appreciate those who testify and for the project and against the project. But just on the record, I just want to state that we won't tolerate any forms of discrimination, discrimination to any parties or any demographic within our communities. To insinuate that all accidents happen because of migrants isn't something that we'll tolerate, and I think that could be taken as very offensive. I'm not sure if that's what the witness was trying to do, but it could be insinuated as such. So just want to state that for the record, and I apologize to Councilmember Juan and my colleagues on, colleagues here who felt offended by that statement. And we'll move on to the next panel. So thank you very much and apologize for that, Councilmember Juan. The next panel that will be coming up is Stephen Bodzin, Jean Colley, Caroline Spitzer, Christina Furlong, and Stefan Ziemba. The first one to speak, to testify today will be Stephen Bodzin. Stephen, you may begin, and please have your camera on.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Stephen.
Fucking great, yes. My name is Stephen Bodzin. I live in Jackson Heights, about a half mile from the site. Thank you very much for hearing the testimony. So, the hearing today has actually been pretty inspiring up until this project. It's been remarkable, all the high-quality mixed-use designs that are being proposed all across Western Queens, but it's really unfortunate because this project is, it's the opposite. And I, I mean, I hear the sponsors and the immediate neighbors saying that the current zoning is apparently not right for the site, and, you know, I believe that. It's quite possible that the proposed zoning category would be better, but this project is wrong. I'm just gonna focus on, on one thing, which is the site plan. If you look at the, the plan, it has this back alley with these four charging stations. And in order for vehicles to get in and out of there, they're gonna have to drive over the sidewalk. This, I mean, that's, that's the very least, right? At the very least, there'll be a curb cut at each end. And the way it's set up, you're gonna have cars charging in there. So, from the kind of front end of it, you're gonna need cars to back in across the sidewalk to get into that alley. This sort of site, that's like people have said, is right between two schools, you know, and, and it's being pitched as a showroom, but I mean, that alone is, you know, is certainly gonna have some vehicle access and egress issues that I don't think have been adequately addressed. And in addition, we haven't heard any explanation of how people are supposed to get to and from the showroom. I mean, yes, it is a transit-rich neighborhood, but, you know, I think people who are shopping for, for fancy SUVs, you know, a lot of those are people who already have a car. I think that that nice big sidewalk in the rendering is gonna be parking. I think that's gonna, you're gonna have cars on it. And I, I appreciate the, the planners saying that they're willing to work with the city to mitigate that, but I think if they were really serious about this, that would already be on the plan. So I, I, I'm not seeing it.
Your time has expired.
Yeah. Anyway, Northern Boulevard's been a sacrifice zone for too long. I appreciate the pushback on the car industry, and I think that we should be converting Northern into more beautiful mixed-use projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. The next person to testify is Caroline Spitzer. Caroline, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself and have your video on, please. You may begin.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Caroline Spitzer. I'm a resident of Sunnyside, and I strongly oppose the rezoning of fifty-eight oh two Northern Boulevard. I ask the council to consider the long-term implications of approving the variance for a luxury boutique automobile showroom, not just for the district but for the city at large. The showroom will only offer four types of high-end SUVs. Do we need more oversized vehicles on our streets? Regardless of any safety features, these vehicles, time and time again, have proven to be more deadly and dangerous for road users and one of the leading sources of carbon emissions globally. The weight of these large vehicles, and even heavier once their fleet becomes electric, is incredibly damaging to our city's roads, many of which, like the BQE, are crumbling under the weight of these heavy vehicles. On the same street not too far away, a pedestrian was killed by this type of vehicle. What type of opportunity is the council waiting for, if not this, to choose safer streets and cleaner air for residents, present and future? This business owner is not a member of the immediate community and has not offered anything concrete in exchange for the zoning change, except for an incomplete plan for electric vehicle charging, which became less and less feasible for open community use as their presentation to the Community Board went on. We need housing, and along with that, we need commercial use diversity that will be truly supportive to the housing soon to come on Northern Boulevard with Innovation Queens, not more SUVs. If we want a safer, greener, less hostile Northern Boulevard, I ask you to reject this rezoning and the status quo. Thank you.
Thank you. The next app, witness to speak will be Christina Furlong. Christina, if you can hear me, unmute yourself, show your video, and you may begin.
Good afternoon. I am a resident of Jackson Heights, a longtime Safe Streets advocate, and someone who's opposing in asking City Council to oppose this zoning use. I, I've asked you to refrain from approving a two-story car dealership on Northern Boulevard. If you have not visited Northern Boulevard, it is full of car dealerships and often double-parked by car carrier vehicles that load and unload, causing serious danger to bicyclists and pedestrians. It was just twenty eighteen, a few years ago, that Commissioner Trottenberg held a press conference at Broadway and Northern Boulevard, saying, "We have to fix Northern Boulevard. We have too many curb cuts." It was twenty eighteen when she came to announce changes to Northern Boulevard, and since then, biking has increased. A new high school building, which will include three schools, one, a specialized school. In those short years, the area has become more residential, and the protected bike lane, a new H-Mart, and better transit have made the area more of a boulevard that connects neighborhoods, Astoria, Sunnyside, Woodside, Jackson Heights, rather than what the existing Copel dealerships have posted a humongous billboard calling Copel Boulevard. It's been, you know, everybody knows that that is just loaded with car dealerships. When I moved from Manhattan to Queens in nineteen ninety-nine, I was driving up Northern Boulevard in tears, saying, "What has happened? This is a strip mall in, in back." And we all know, as residents of Queens, as advocates of Queens, that this is an incredible borough, and that is a highly prized location that could be used for retail, for other kinds of development. Back in twenty fourteen, sixty-four-year-old Kamar Ragunath was killed on Northern at Forty-first Ave, and since then, advocacy for non-vehicle.
Your time has expired.
Dead death in many others, including five schoolchildren. Five schoolchildren have been killed on Northern Boulevard, and we're, and we're, we're right by PS one fifty-two. We have the high school coming. This is not the kind of use that should be used. Okay?
Thank, thank you, Christina. You could start wrapping up.
Okay. The dealership representatives don't understand pedestrian safety and the need to reduce the number of curb cuts in vehicles driving across sidewalks. Their statement that it's currently an eyesore, rest assured, prime real estate could and would be developed there. We simply cannot have another dealership at this time of extreme housing crisis, overuse of vehicle traffic, and beyond threshold level of car dealerships in the area. I'm constituent who feels that the neighbors have not been made aware of such plans. I don't think it's the right kind of growth for Northern Boulevard, and I think it's a tremendous step backwards in Vision Zero policies that the, even this current mayor.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
The next witness to testify is Jean Colley. Jean will be calling us on the phone, so she won't be able to be on camera. Jean, if you can hear me, please, please. Jean, if you can hear me, please press star nine, and you may begin. Jean Colley?
Hi, my name is Jean Colley, and I live about two blocks from Northern Boulevard in Long Island City, just where Northern Boulevard starts. And walking along Northern Boulevard, all you encounter is double parked cars and cars on the sidewalk. It's a dumping ground for car repair and car dealership. That is one of the reasons I'm against rezoning this lot for another SUV car dealership. Northern Boulevard can be a better place. It can be a place with pedestrian-friendly space and housing. And we don't have to have more unwanted land uses of cars. And I think the dealer said that he needs to park on the sidewalk, and he has to move cars around on the sidewalk. It's illegal to park on the sidewalk and to drive on the sidewalk. And what that means is that there's no enforcement. And also, that this location, or the locations that car dealerships are doing this, they're not viable locations to sell cars. They need to be somewhere where there's much more space, not in the middle of New York City. We deserve better.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
The next witness to testify is Stefan Zimba. Stefan, if you can hear me, please unmute yourself, and you may begin.
Stephen or Stefan, if you can hear us, can you unmute? Terribly that he just declined the request to promote, so.
Okay. This, council members, do you have any questions for the applicant panel? If not, they are excused. Counsel, do we have any more panels?
We don't have anyone waiting online, so if there's anyone here in the room that would like to testify, please come forward, or see one of the sergeants. Chair, it doesn't look like we have anyone else, so we can go ahead and close.
Okay, give me one second. There be northern members of the public who is to testify on LU's numbers 156 and 157 relating to the 58-02 Northern Boulevard rezoning proposal. The public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over. I will now open the public hearing on LU's numbers 158 and 159 relating to the 446-448 Park Avenue rezoning proposal and Councilmember Wrestler's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing M1-1 zoning district to an M1-4/R6A zoning district and related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. And I would now like to turn it over to Councilmember Wrestler to give a statement. Councilmember Wrestler does not have a statement. Counsel, can you please call the panel and administer the affirmation?
Well, dear, and Richard, maybe you can help me identify your co-panelists, but I have that it's going to be you, Richard Lobell, and Yoel Horowitz, and Louis Garfinkel. Did I get that right? All right. So, applicants, can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and your answers to all council member questions?
I do.
Hey, Richard. Nice to see you, Richard. Happy New Year.
Thanks. He was well, Chair Riley, and congratulations on Cap Alpha size.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. And for the viewing public, if you need the accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you to please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Riley. Richard Lobell of Sheldon Lobell, PC, for the applicant. Good afternoon. I'm joined today by Yoel and Louis to discuss the 446 to 448 Park Avenue rezoning. This is the rezoning of nine lots, or portions of lots, in Brooklyn Community Board Three. I will run through the presentation quickly, and then the entire applicant team is available to answer any questions. Next slide. So the substance of the application is very straightforward. There are five lots on the adjacent block and four lots on our block, which are currently zoned M1-1. And those would be rezoned to an MX-4 district, M1-4/R6A. This would facilitate the development of a six-story-plus seller residential building with roughly eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet of floor area and eleven dwelling units to be constructed at the site, which is roughly thirty-three hundred square feet. In addition, as with other rezonings of this nature, there would be a text amendment, which would allow for mandatory inclusionary housing to be mapped on the parcels included in the rezoning, currently contemplated as either option one or two. Next slide. The next slide really recites a very brief site history. Both lots are vacant. There are two lots in the development site. The first lot, 38, was previously improved with a non-conforming three-story-plus basement residential building, built in nineteen oh five, which was demolished in 2014 due to impaired structural integrity. Both lots, again, are vacant. The next slide gives you the statistics from the proposed development. Again, a very modest proposal. The building itself would be six stories plus cellar, which would rise at the base to sixty-five feet, and then set back at the sixth story by fifteen feet. The floor area would be eleven thousand three hundred and seventy-three square feet, or 3.49 FAR. A maximum in the R6A district is 3.6. The total height would amount to eighty feet. There would be eleven units, currently contemplated as five ones, five twos, and one three-bedroom, all generous unit sizes. And in that would include three affordable units pursuant to MIH. The next slide is a picture of the zoning map. You can see from the zoning map, and we will be able to see this more closely in the maps that follow, that the site is currently zoned M1-1, but is adjacent to an MX-4 district, which is an M1-2 district partnered with an R6A district. So this rezoning would merely seek to extend within the circled area that MX-4 district further to the west to encompass these sites along Park Avenue. The next slide, please, is a tax map, which, along with the slide after, it demonstrates with particularity the nature of the rezoning. Again, you can see this is a modest rezoning of roughly eight thousand square feet on each of the two blocks, total of sixteen thousand square feet. The site, the plan after this, which shows the site in red, demonstrates the area map. It's the next slide, which really demonstrates why the land use rationale here is strong. The M1-4/R6A that's adjacent to the site was zoned in the 2001 Flushing Bedford Avenue rezoning. And this was a rezoning which understood that many of the surrounding uses to the north, northeast, east, and south of the site were zoned residential, and so rezoned those to permit for additional development, consistent with these three-to-seven-story residential buildings. So in allowing for the extension here, what are we seeking? We're seeking to develop on vacant lots, but importantly, every one of the other lots within this rezoning area has residential uses, either in the form of an entirely residential building or a mixed-use building. So this is one of those rare rezonings where you really are allowing the zoning map to reflect what's already on the ground. This will, we look a lot at conformance, at whether or not the buildings and the uses within an area conform to the underlying zoning. Right now, you would have no conformance, or, you know, if you looked at the vacant lots, maybe ten percent conformance of the existing lots. Whereas after this rezoning, a full eighty-nine, ninety percent of those lots will be conforming and now allowing for residential use. So the land use policy here is sound, both in extending this modest residential district, as well as in allowing for conforming uses to occupy all of these sites. The next several pages are photographs of the area. I would run through them briefly. Primarily, the first page, which shows the residential building on the corner. That is the building immediately adjacent, you can see in the top-left picture, adjacent to the site. This is an existing five-story residential building permitted by BSA variance. I would note that Community Board Three has been subject over the last number of years to roughly fifty-five to sixty residential variances within its community district to allow for residential use within manufacturing districts. What we seek to do here is to allow this through a better planning process, through the rezoning process. If you want to fast-forward through the pictures, you will come to the plans of the project. Again, a modest building. The first plan shows the site plan, which demonstrates the proposed residential six-story building. The next plan shows the first floor divided between a six-hundred-and-eight-hundred-foot residential unit, as well as a residential lobby. And then the floors above, two through five, each with two units, ranging from seven hundred to eight hundred square feet. And the final slide with floor plans showing a thousand feet at the top story. The next two plans show sections of the building, which demonstrate the adjacent building as well, and show that this is an appropriate building, maintaining the required setback at the sixth story. And the final slide, which demonstrates the building, shows a rendering of the building, again, a rather attractive building, fitting contextually nicely in with the surrounding uses. That concludes this portion of the presentation. I would merely add that Brooklyn Community Board Three voted in favor of this application. We were entirely thrilled with the process with the community board and their vote in favor of this application. This community board, you know, has not always been favorably disposed to this type of rezoning activity. I think that they recognized here that the merits of a residential slash mixed-use rezoning were overwhelming. So with that, we did achieve the approval of the community board, the Brooklyn Borough President, and subsequently, the City Planning Commission. And we hope, Chair Riley, that you, as well as your colleagues, and especially Councilmember Wrestler, will see fit to approve this rezoning. And with that, the applicant panel, how can you answer any questions?
Thank you, Richard. I have a couple of questions, and I'll pass to Councilmember Wrestler to ask his questions. This project is under the square footage minimum and barely exceeds the minimum unit threshold for MIH. How can we have confidence that your development will include enough units to ensure that MIH applies?
Thank you for the question, Chair Riley. So by way of background, this application has been before the city in some form for over six to seven years. The applicant originally attempted an application as part of public record before BSA, and eventually came to the City Planning Commission. So the applicant here has a longstanding commitment to residential use of the property, as well as to affordable use of the property. The applicant is more than willing to work with the council, and particularly, Councilmember Wrestler, to make whatever commitments are necessary to ensure that affordable units will be housed at the site. So whatever form that takes, we would be happy to do that. You know, I'd say, as a matter of record, this applicant has been through a lot with regards to this property, but we would be willing to enter into that discussion, and we would definitely commit to including that affordability.
You are applying to rezone this site to a mixed-use M1-4/R6A district, but your development does not include any commercial use. Can you describe your rationale for building a hundred percent, I'm excuse you, a hundred percent residential?
Sure, council members. So we recognize that there are other lots within the rezoned area, specifically on the adjacent opposite corner, which include ground-floor commercial use. The applicant here, through the research with regards to the property, and again, a longstanding review of the property over a course of years, made a determination as far as feasibility that an entirely residential building would be appropriate and would be feasible to build at the site. We do also recognize that there are other properties included in this rezoning, which may elect, as is currently the existing case on the opposite corner, to have ground-floor commercials. So, you know, we're rezoning from an M1-1, which allows commercial. The rezoned district would permit commercial, but the applicant's intention here would be to build a fully residential building, while recognizing that local commercial may be appropriate, or even more appropriate, for some of the adjacent sites.
Thank you. The racial impact report shows that close to sixty percent of the household in Bed-Stuy have incomes under eighty percent of the area median income, with a greater proportion under fifty percent of AMI than Brooklyn or the city at large. Why do you believe that MIH option two is appropriate in this context?
Well, council member, the truth is that we are mapping options one and options two. From our prior actions at the council and before the community board, we are aware that there is a preference for option one. So what we'd like to do, and what we always are interested in doing, is not merely proposing a rezoning, but proposing a project. Yoel, right now, is faced with a position where there is a lot of inconsistency and uncertainty as far as the development of the sites concerned, with regards to financing, with regards to cost of construction materials, and most importantly, with regards to 421A being removed from the opportunity to develop the site. The intention here would be to comply with whatever takes the place of 421A on a going-forward basis. And so with that, we would have to maintain whatever affordability was required with regards to 421A. So if that is option one, the applicant would be happy to comply with that. The only reason that we're mapping both here is frankly to make sure of two things. The first is that our neighbors have the flexibility, to the extent that they redevelop their sites, to use both. And also, so that as Yoel goes down the process, he's able to develop the site, and again, with an actual project that he can finance. So we make no assertions with regards to the lack that option two would be even better than option one here. What we merely hope for is the flexibility to provide that, so that in the case that it would assist in making the development feasible, we're able to do so.
And last question. What strategies will you employ to reduce energy use, manage stormwater, and otherwise maximize the environmental performance of your building?
So, Chair Riley, we're cognizant of the council's commitment to sustainability measures, as well as the Brooklyn Borough President, who so mentioned in his resolutions. The applicant has committed to a green roof at the site, as well as solar at the site, in order to comply with and to satisfy certain local laws, as well as abatement applications. So that's the first thing. And when we talk about a green roof, we're talking with regards to local laws. A minimum of fifty percent of coverage with a green roof, as well as eighty percent of that being drought-resistant flora. In addition to that, and in addition to common measures such as low-flow toilets and LED lighting, the applicant is currently exploring alternative energy sources for the building, and is also- What? Oh, the roof detention for water retention as well. So we do have a host of measures we are taking at the site. We look forward to taking those measures at the site. And so that's how we would answer the question.
Thank you, Richard. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you, Chair Riley. It's always good to be with you. And thank you to the applicant for joining us today. I'll just say firstly, there is a, one of the things I hear most about in South Williamsburg, in the northwest corner of Bedford-Savasen, is from families who are young, who are getting married, and they have no place to live. They have no place to go. They have to leave Williamsburg, which breaks my heart. And so I welcome the opportunity for additional housing, here in this community especially. But I want to make sure that we're building housing that meets the needs of the community. And so I'm perturbed, concerned, disappointed in the proposed unit mix that you have for this project. Five one-bedroom units and just one three-bedroom unit. Not to quiz you, Richard, but what's the average family size for families in this area?
Yeah, so thank you for the question, council member. The unit mix is somewhat misaligned with what is actually taking place in the building. So importantly here, the actual unit sizes, in allowing for eleven units within an eleven-thousand-square-feet building, are really rather generous. There's only two units proposed for each floor. The smallest unit is on the ground floor because there is a residential lobby. And other than that, the tallest, the highest floor, the sixth floor, allows for one three-bedroom unit. The remaining floors are merely split between two units. So really, what it really amounts to, as Louis and I spoke about prior to the hearing, is that the one-bedroom units are actually, and actually could be conceived as two-bedroom units, which would make the project nine two-bedroom units, one three-bedroom unit, and one studio unit on the ground floor. So really, with that-
Could be conceived of. That's quite a description.
Yeah, it's more that, from a legal standpoint, from a DLB and code filing standpoint, the square footages of those floors, two through five, would permit those to be two family, two bedroom units. So-
But you're not proposing them as two-bedroom units in this project?
Do we have any issue? I'm sorry.
It was debatable. You know, it was Louis Garfinkel. It was debatable how to lay it out. And when I originally spoke with them, they said, "We spoke about a one-bedroom." But then, the way I see it, you could have two bedrooms in this. It's just up to the developer how he wants to market, how big his living room should be, you know. So it can go either way.
I recognize a young family may not need a two-bedroom immediately upon getting married. But shortly thereafter, the- but shortly thereafter, they certainly do. And so, uh, I would strongly consider, uh, reconsidering that unit mix as we move forward with this process. Um, I had a couple other questions. The adjacent building has balconies that come up basically directly to Yoel's lot line for this proposed project. Have you been in touch with that developer? Have you reached a resolution? Would Yoel have balconies for your apartments that potentially could accommodate Sukas or whatever, you know, or, you know, whoever may live there? Um, would they be on that side, adjacent to that building? Could you just give us a little context on all of this?
Sure. So, um, the first thing we would note is that we have reached out to the neighbors. Um, Yoel has indeed been in contact with the neighbors, as well as the management company for that building, and, um, understanding that there's certain violations issued to that building, which we can't do anything about. With regards to our building and their building, we're, we're trying to move forward together and to try to come to some understanding as we move forward with our building plans. The complications posed by the corner building on Franklin are that the violations issued to that building relate to, uh, a BSA approval. That BSA approval was issued pursuant to two thousand, two thousand and three variance application, and so that building is in violation in accordance with the printed violations. Again, a matter of public record. But with regards to whether or not we are reaching out to them, we have, we are, we are in continued communication with that building. And with regards to our building, while we would be able to have balconies off the rear of the building, we would not have balconies to the side, so there would be no similar concern with Sukot, uh, uh, on the adjacent, adjacent to that building. I think one of the things that makes our application challenging, and also kind of going a little bit to the unit sizes as well, is that we have a shallow lot. Uh, the lot itself is forty feet, uh, across by eighty feet deep. So with a standard, uh, rear yard of thirty feet, maybe twenty-five feet due to the lack of much depth, uh, we would be looking at, um, at floor, at, uh, floor, um, uh, lot area per floor, or the floor area of each floor being relatively a small floor plate, a forty by fifty-five, fifty-one to fifty-five. So, um, it limits our layout, but we would, uh, we would not have balconies on that side of the building.
Okay. Um, all helpful. Uh, I really appreciated Chair Riley's questions around, uh, commitments to sustainability and, uh, pleased to learn about the green roof and the solar. Uh, the only other question I wanted to ask, I was a little confused on the, uh, the Park Avenue Fish property. Is that in this rezoning area?
Councilmember, can you specifically tell me which, which lot that would be?
Well, I'm a little confused if it's 462 or 468, but it's the one-story Fish Building. You'll see on slide, page three of eleven, the lower left-hand corner. Number, image nine.
Excuse me for a moment.
Park Fish, yeah.
Three of eleven, okay. Um, so let's see, nine... Right, so that, so the, those buildings fronting on Park Avenue within a hundred feet from the corner of Park and Franklin would be included in the rezoning area.
Have you been in touch with the owner of the Park Avenue Fish lot?
We've not. Uh, that unit, that use would be conforming, and the building would be conforming, uh, and complying within the rezoning.
My understanding was it would allow for eight stories of development there, so I was just, that's potentially even a greater development than the one that you're talking about today with your project. So I just want to understand, you have not been in touch with nor familiar with the owner of that property?
I'm not in touch with him, but I know him very well. I was not in touch, but I know him very well.
Would you be able to help facilitate?
Sorry, can you just state your name for the record before you speak?
Hi, my name is Yoel Horowitz. Nice to meet you.
Good to see you, Mr. Horowitz.
Thanks.
And would you be amenable to facilitating an introduction for us to the property owner?
Yes.
Thank you. And lastly, and then I promise to shut up, Chair Riley, the, uh, um, you commit to making the, your project subject to MIH?
Correct.
Unequivocally, a hundred percent, this will be an MIH project?
Correct. And, and the, the, uh, the goal of the project has always been to be a rental building. Uh, indeed, one of the benefits that we are now offered is not being able to come before BSA and being in front of the council, is the app, the opportunity to become a mandatory inclusionary housing building. So the intention has always been to provide...
Well, I, uh, building in New York City is not an easy thing. I'm sorry that you've been trying for six or seven years to build what is a small and, and reasonable project that will provide vital and necessary housing for our community. I want to thank you for taking the time to come before us today. I hope you'll incorporate the, the feedback and comments in a constructive, but, but serious way, um, and, uh, look forward to this project moving forward. Thank you, Chair Riley, and thank you to the applicant.
Thank you, councilmember Wrestler. Uh, there being no questions for the applicant panel, you are not excused. Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, council, are there any members of the public who is to testify on 446-448 Park Avenue proposal in person or remotely?
Chair, we have none remotely, and I don't see anyone in the room that's here to testify for that item, so we can go ahead and close the hearing.
There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LU's numbers one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine? See you in two, brother. The 446, four-four, that's 448 Park Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. I would now open the public hearing for LU's number, LU number one sixty-eight, uh, relating to the Gowanus Green Empire State Development Corporation Grant Proposal in Councilmember Hanise District in Brooklyn. This application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development seeks capital funding from the ESCD, ESDC, up to five million for the Gowanus Green Affordable Housing Development. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting council's website at council.nyc.gov slash land use. And there's no one in here now, but if anyone comes in, uh, once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeant arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Uh, council, can you please call the first panel for this item and administer the affirmation?
Sure, and thank you to HPD and the Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination for being patient with us today. Um, so the panel is Justin Dunlan, and available for question is Lee Ilan and Halas Sala.
Thank you so much.
And then, after emergency, sorry, uh, can you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answer to any of the council member questions?
Thank you so much, council. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please see the, send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now the applicant team may begin. Please just remember to state your name and organization for the record before you begin, may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Riley, and, well, I guess it's just Chair Riley at this point. Um, but, um...
Do you have a presentation?
Uh, no.
No?
We're just gonna...
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, my name is Justin Dunlan. I am the Community Affairs Specialist for the Division of Government Affairs at HPD. I'm joined by my, I'm joined by my colleagues, Halas Sala, who's the Deputy Director of Brooklyn Planning in HPD, and Lee Ilan, the Chief of Planning at the Mayor's Office of Environmental Remediation. Uh, pursuant to the New York State Urban Development Act, the city intends to file an application for the Empire State Development Corporation's Restore New York Communities Initiative, more commonly known as Restore New York Grant. Uh, this grant provides municipalities with financial assistance for the revitalization of commercial and residential properties. The program encourages community development and neighborhood growth through the demolition, rehabilitation, and reconstruction of vacant, abandoned, condemned, and surplus properties. The city has proposed future building A within the Gowanus Green Project in Brooklyn in Councilmember Hanise District for its grant application. Gowanus Green, a six-building, nine-hundred-and-fifty-unit affordable housing development with commercial and resident, with commercial and community facility space and approximately one-point-five acres of open space, cited for a future park, was previously approved by the council as an urban development action area and project pursuant to Article sixteen of the General Municipal Law in November of twenty-twenty-one. Under the proposed application, the city will apply for five million dollars to facilitate the first phase of reconstruction and development of the Gowanus Green Project. The grant will contribute to the success of this permanently affordable, mixed-use residential development at a time when the city is experiencing a historic dual crisis in both housing shortages and homelessness. To that end, consistent with the guidelines issued by Empire State Development, the city respectfully requests that the council make the following findings related to New York City's application for funding this capital project under the Restore New York Grant. One, that the proposed project is consistent with the municipality's local revitalization, or urban development plan. Two, that the proposed financing is appropriate for the specific project. Three, that the project facilitates effective and efficient use of existing and future public resources so as to promote both economic development and preservation of community resources. And four, that the project develops and enhances infrastructure and/or facilities in a manner that will attract, create, and sustain employment opportunities where applicable. Thank you, thank you Chair Riley and the Subcommittee for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Just have two quick questions. How did you decide to prioritize Gowanus Green Building A for this funding? And before you answer, if you could just state your name for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Halas Sala, and I'm the Deputy Director for, um, Brooklyn Planning at HPD. Um, so this, the site Gowanus Green is multi-phase. Um, building A is of the first phase. Um, it was prioritized, um, for a number of reasons. One of the specific criteria that the, um, grant asked for, which it be a, um, Empire Zone and a BOA. Um, also that it was, um, ready and feasible to begin within the next year. So this site has all of its approvals. It went through ULP and gained approvals in November of twenty-twenty-one. Um, and it does have a lot of the, um, pre-development finances that are needed to move forward. So, um, of the two buildings, uh, building A and building D, uh, building A was one that was seen to be ready to, to move forward at this stage. Um, additionally, it can be connected to existing infrastructure and facilities that are already in place in the neighborhood.
Thank you. And last question, what is the development timeline for building A?
So, um, the grant itself would require construction begin, um, by February of twenty-twenty-five, so we would be looking at a closing timeline, um, before then, and then getting the, um, permits in place for construction to begin no later than, um, that timeline.
Thank you. I have no more questions for this applicant panel. Uh, council, are there any members of the public who is to testify on this topic?
Chair, we have no members online, and as you can see, we don't have any members here in person.
Thank you. This panel's excuse, thank you so much. And thank you for being patient.
So we can go ahead and close the hearing.
There being no members of the public who is to testify on LU's numbers one sixty-two relating to the Gowanus Green ESDC Grant Proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the items are laid over. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, Land Use, and other council staff, and the sergeant arms for participating in today's meeting. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.